Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us at the October 6th meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. This meeting is being conducted as authorized by Governor Hochul, who has temporarily altered the open meetings law to allow public meetings to be held virtually as we were before. Let me first confirm that each board member is alone. Mr. Pickett? Mr. Oliver?
Alone.
Ms. Dexter? Ms. Wasser?
I am alone.
Ms. Weiser?
I am alone.
And Ms. De Napoli?
I'm alone.
And I am alone as well. So let me first lead us in a pledge to the American flag.
Just to let you know, I
pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. The first item on the agenda is a new public hearing for Dollar General located at One East Dorsey. As a reminder, this project was already reviewed and approved. The time in which two grant extensions to complete conditions had lapsed, even despite our being able to toll, I think it was 222 extra days because of COVID, and they're still lapsed anyway, so they're now back before us with the exact same proposal, the exact same plan. Make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make that motion. Chris Oliver?
I'll second. Ann Dexter?
All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Oppose or abstain? Motion carries. Ms. Majanowski, both you and Mr. Albanese are here tonight, so let me turn the floor over to you.
Thank you. Can everyone see the exhibit okay?
Yes.
Excellent. Yes, good evening. For the record, I'm Karen Majanowski from Bowler Engineering, here with Jeffrey Albanese from HSD Hyde Park, who is the owner of One East Dorsey Lane here in the town. As you can see on this exhibit, the property is located at the intersection of East Dorsey Lane and Violet Avenue, and is approximately 1.8 acres in size. The property is bounded by this white boundary, as you can see here, and is within the neighborhood business zoning district. We are proposing a 7,500 plus or minus square foot Dollar General retail store, and this exhibit here depicts where that proposed store would be located. Generally, in the same area that the existing commercial business was located, we kept it up at the intersection, just outside of the required minimum front yard setbacks from each street, so that it would be compliant from a setback standpoint. The store entrance would be at the corner over by the access from East Dorsey Lane, where we're proposing a full access to the site. We're also proposing a write-in only to capture vehicles off of Violet Avenue. As part of this proposal, we're proposing 27 parking spaces to serve the store, and the remaining areas of the site would be used for green space landscaping and stormwater management. The darker boundary here in the green space would be our stormwater management area. We are also proposing to add sidewalks to the entire site frontage to wrap all the way around here, which is about 900 feet of sidewalks. Along that, we are also proposing street trees and landscaping and lower-lying shrubs along that frontage to really enhance and improve upon what is there today. The store will be served by a new well for water and a new septic system. And the access points have both been reviewed and approved respectively by Duchess County for East Dorsey Lane and New York State DOT for Violet Avenue. We're proposing a monument sign by the access to East Dorsey Lane here in this area, along with landscaping, a sidewalk connection, a bike rack, and a bench in that area near the front of the store coming off of East Dorsey Lane as well. Lastly, I'll jump to the architecture. So if you're familiar with the existing store a few miles up Violet Avenue in the town, then you'll see that this architecture is a bit different from that. We're very proud of this and excited about it. We'll have gable roofs and dormers, gooseneck lighting, a nice color scheme and landscaping out front of the building, as you can see here. So this is the view that you would see if you're within the parking lot on site, facing the store and the intersection from the parking lot. This is also a smaller store. In fact, it's about 30% smaller than the store that they typically use these days. Dollar General has thrived throughout the pandemic and been an essential business. So while the pandemic held up some of this project from going to construction, we're excited to get the review and feedback and comments this evening to continue the process to head towards construction. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me first say that for anybody in the audience viewing this, the addition of the landscaping, the sidewalks, the bench, the bike rack, these are all, and particularly the architecture, these are all elements that came about because of my colleagues and our work, working with the applicants back and forth to come up with a project that we think least suits side park and will make the town proud. I agree that this is an exciting project, and it's a shame that we couldn't get it going beforehand. I do want to point out that one of the issues, there were several. The first was sightline distance with Department of Public Works on East Dorsey Lane. Things had to be changed, including the actual location, the driveways and landscaping, the sidewalk location, et cetera, but that was all accomplished. The bigger issue was that the Department of Health had not given full approval to the water system and the wastewater. That's because they had to demo the building to actually drill the well sites that they're drilling now, so everyone can see that activity. We did have an email from a neighbor involving some rainwater crossing over to a path. We know that once this is constructed and the stormwater management techniques and designs are implemented, that will stop. So we're just hoping that we won't have many more occasions like this. In the interim, if you're done, Karen, then let me start with our consultants. Mr. Sotero, any comments? Is Pete still on? I don't think, oh, there he is. Pete, any comments? Let me move over, let me move over to Ms. Moss. Any comments? Then let me move over to the board first. Ms. Weiser, any comments?
I'm just looking forward to getting this started. I think it's a great-looking building, and you guys worked really hard on making it work for the town, so I'm just looking forward to it moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pickett?
Same thing that Ann mentioned. Look forward to getting it started and completed.
Ms. Wasser?
I'm gonna echo my colleagues' comments. Delighted that, hopefully, moving forward now. Casting by the site today, you are definitely moving forward.
Hi, Chair Dexter?
I also share my colleagues' appreciation for this project, but I did want to just mention a concern that I have now that I'm I drive by the other Dollar General every day, and I noticed that, and I'm not sure we actually addressed it in the site plan, and that is, it's, I'm not sure it's garbage. I think it's recycling. I think it's cardboard recycling on wire racks. And it looks like it gets staged out by, out by the garbage, but there's no screening for it. And just when it looks like it's going to go into the parking lot, it looks like it gets picked up and move, you know, we can't, we can't see it anymore. So I just wanted to, I think it's an operations issue, but I also think that if we need a little bit more screening, we should probably address that. You're on mute, Michael.
Thank you. Karen, do you want to weigh in on that, or are you aware of what Ann's discussing?
I have not been by that store recently, but I, I think I understand the concern. So we have a dumpster enclosure proposed that is 12 by 18, which should leave room, aside from the dumpster itself, for cardboard recycling, but I will certainly share that comment, and Jeff Albanese from HSD is on the call as well from an operational standpoint with Dollar General. And if we had to add a note to the site plan, we could certainly do that.
Great. Thank you so much.
Mr. Oliver, comments?
I will also echo my colleagues, and I'm excited to see the progress on the site. And for the last week or so driving by, I see the building coming down, and it's exciting to see new things going on in Hyde Park. Thank you.
Ms. De Napoli, any additional comments?
I would only have to say that I cannot be as excited as the owner and as Karen must be at this late stage.
Did anyone, Councilman Krepnik, did anyone sign up from the public to speak about this application? Thank you. Then I want to make sure that for those who are joining us and just observing maybe the planning board the first time, this really was discussed for about six months back and forth as project changes occurred. The reason why you're not hearing anything tonight is because they're proposing exactly what we approved last time. So that is the reason why there's no comments, because we all like the project. It wouldn't have been approved otherwise. I do also want to just point out for anyone else who might be listening, there's apparently chatter on Facebook recently about why does the town need another Dollar General? And that why didn't the planning board just deny it? Because there's already one existing. So for those who might not be aware, the planning board is not here to deny things. The enabling state legislation that permits town boards to create planning boards, because in many small towns in the West and the North, your town board is your planning board as well. But the legislation actually states that we are here to promote the orderly development of town. I will note, as I have often in the last 17 years, promote does not mean deny. That noted, this is a general commercial use, and general commercial uses are allowed throughout all the commercial districts. So it's not up to the board to say, we already have too many of these. I'll also add that Dollar General is not a stupid corporation. They didn't make it this far by making unplanned decisions, or decisions that they don't think would work monetary-wise. So that's part of the reason why this exists. And the same is true with almost any business. The board, unless a use is specifically denied or not allowed in a district, a zoning district, it's up to us to process that, make sure that there are project changes so that it fits the code, and then vote on it. So in this case, that's the reason why we have another Dollar General. But again, I personally am very proud of this architecture. Very proud of this architecture, and I can't wait for it to happen. So those are my only comments. If there's other public comment or comments from the board, make it a motion to close the public hearing with the proviso that we will allow seven days for additional written comment.
I'll make that motion. Ann Dexter?
I'll second. Chris Oliver?
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
So Mr. Albanese and Ms. Majanowski, we actually have a rudimentary resolution prepared for the next meeting. There'll be no public comment on it, obviously, but if you want to attend, you're welcome to. Since it's by Zoom, it's pretty easy these days instead of having to drive down. But we will get the resolution to you prior to the meeting, just so you can take a look at it. Okay?
Sounds great. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night. Take care.
And Jeff, as an aside, the supervisor would love to hear from you now. She's back and ready to talk turkey about other sites she might be interested in.
Great. Thank you, Michael, and thank you to the board, too. It's a really nice night. We thank you for your comments and obviously, since we're knocking down the building, we're ready to get going as soon as we possibly can and build this. But thank you so much. We appreciate you the night tonight.
Good luck.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is another new public hearing. This is for a house located 15 Andover in the Greenfields neighborhood. I understand that we have many people tonight who signed up to speak, and I'm going to allow that. But before I ask to open the public hearing, I just want to make a couple of comments. I was able to email this to some of the individuals from Greenfields who signed up to speak, but for some reason, optonline.net accounts bounced back all day long to me saying that they were full and to quit bothering them. So at any rate, one thing that occurred that, sort of late-breaking as in this morning, our planning consultant, Bonnie Franzen, went back and dug into and found the original subdivision plat. A condition on the plat indicates that all houses need to be principal, or all structures must be principal on every lot in Greenfields. And applying for a two-family dwelling, that would mean that there are two principal structures, two principal dwellings. So even if the ZBA granted the density variance, the board would be unable to grant an applicant, a request to make it two-family, because it's restricted, it's restricted by the plat, and the notes there supersede anything that's in our code. So I discussed this, or rather, I emailed Mr. Nusshawat to let him know. He indicated that he will be meeting with Ms. Moss to revise the application, to change it from a two-family to an accessory apartment. Accessory apartments, by nature, the apartment has to be within a certain percentage of the size of the principal use. So the original part of the house would be the principal use, and the accessory apartment would be the secondary use, meaning it's subordinate to the principal. So that, that is allowed under our code despite the note on the subdivision plat. So that's the first thing, sort of housekeeping, I'll call it. The second is, as you might have, for those who are going to speak, as you might have just seen with my colleagues on the board, if you, if what you want to say has been covered by another speaker, I don't want you to not speak, but it doesn't really do any good for us to hear the same thing over and over again. The best thing for you to do would be to say, I agree with the first speaker, or the second, or the third, whatever. If you have anything new to add or additional, please consider adding it. And this doesn't mean that I don't, again, that we don't want to hear from you. The board always feels like it can make better decisions by hearing from neighbors, because you live on site. We visit the places, but we don't live there every day to see what it's like. So with that noted, make it a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved to Ann Weiser?
Seconded. Brett Pickett?
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
If the motion carries unanimously, Mr. Nusshawat, I can give this over to you, but in essence, the applicant, the second unit, drilling unit, was established, I believe, sometime around 30 years ago. The applicant's mother, Mrs. Nusshawat, resided in the smaller space for a while, but passed away. And then as part of inheriting and cleaning up things that he picked up, I mean, he's looking to have a CO for both units, and that would require both a density variance in the ZBA, and that includes even for an accessory apartment, I believe. It would also require site plan approval and special use permit approval by the board once they receive the variance. So that's sort of the background. Tony, do you want to add anything?
No, that's fine with me. If I would have known that from the beginning, I would have pursued that path, and no harm intended. It is what it is, and we'll just carry on from here.
Thank you very much. Let me start with consultants. Ms. Franzen, any comments?
Lost my page. I actually, I'm peripheral on this. I think you decided perhaps Pete could handle the review and Victoria, but I did happen to come up with that map note, so other than that, I have nothing to add, Michael.
That was actually what I wanted to thank you for, because we're not even sure we have a copy of the plat in the planning board office. There were, there were fires at different points, so we don't have referenced everything, so it was excellent sleuthing. Mr. Sotero, any comments, Mr. Sotero?
Pete's still muted.
And Ms. Moss, any comments?
Just that some of the public comment that came in related to multifamily dwelling and objecting to multifamily dwelling. By our code, multifamily dwelling is three or more attached dwelling units. This would be two dwelling units, so it's not considered multifamily by code, although there will be an additional dwelling unit as proposed.
Correct. I'll also add, before I get into hearing from the public, there is a discussion I had with Mr. Nusshawat on the difference between two-family units and accessory apartment with the principal use being the single family. So under our code, two-family could actually be the same size, exactly. It could be what we call in the South, a duplex. However, an accessory apartment, again, by our code, it must be subsidiary, smaller, in other words, in size than the principal use. And the reason that is, is because the accessory apartment was originally devised so that, let's say, people who are older, or veterans, or anybody who's, say, used to have bedrooms but doesn't need them anymore, the kids have moved out, they want to make revisions to, say, add a kitchen and add a firewall, and they'd have some rent coming in off of that. But it's always meant to be not a full family living there. That's why it's an accessory apartment. Mostly because of the size restraint, restriction, they're usually just one or a maximum of two bedrooms, because most of the houses we have at Dubies have a maximum of four bedrooms anyway, usually three. So in other words, the intention there is that you would have two-family, I mean, it's just, it's just like having a single family, because it's going to be double the potential impact. With accessory apartment, it's thought, and that was the design, that it will have a less of an impact on the neighborhood, because there would be less people living in the accessory apartment. Are there any comments from my colleagues on the board?
Michael?
Yes, Victoria.
I just wanted to address a comment made by the applicant that, you know, he, the review that's happened thus far is not for nothing, because the planning board still has to approve a site plan, which is going to include parking and any buffers if, if this is going to be allowed. So from the planning board's perspective, the review of a two-family versus an accessory apartment is going to be very similar. And you still need the density variance from the zoning board of appeals, so that is still ongoing. So really, this is, this is a change in paperwork. The board is still going to have to make the same decision, which is whether or not to allow, you know, another unit at the property.
Correct. And based on existing accessory apartments and that whole development of at least 10 to 20 accessory apartments, then I see no, you know, based on me following the rules and regulations, I see that as a positive.
I mean, we don't have that information in our record. If you want to provide that in support of your application, you could certainly provide us with a list of properties that have accessory apartments?
Yes, I can do that.
Thank you. That would be very helpful, Tony.
Yeah, thank you.
I also want to just, so by the way, any comments from colleagues?
Michael, I just wanted, I'm not sure that I heard you say it, but one of the other distinguishing differences between the two-family and accessory apartment is that its owner occupied for the accessory apartment.
Correct. I should have added that.
Does not require that.
Thank you. And Ms. Wasser was actually chatting with that same thing, too, saying, remember, its owner occupied. That is the other difference, is that for it to be an accessory apartment, the owner must occupy the principal structure. I just want to point out that we already received written comments from Joan Lewis, Kitty Brand, and Gamary Cannon. Those have been entered into the record by you submitting them directly via email to Ms. Councilman Krepnik and to our planning board secretary. And so I'm just going to call on some names, people that I believe are here tonight. If I miss anyone, please just raise your hand. There's a function under reactions where there's an actual hand to be raised. You can raise it then, and I'll keep trying, I'll try to look. There's too many people in here. There's more than what my one screen can handle. The first person I think who signed up is Tammy Sheehan. Ms. Sheehan, are you here tonight? Yes. I see her square. Ms. Sheehan, if you could unmute, you can make comments. It looks like you're still muted. Let me move on to Christine Brennan. Are you here tonight, Ms. Brennan? Then let me move on to, is Joan Lewis present? There you are, Joan. Please unmute yourself. That's right, you can speak. The mute button is in the lower left as well. It's a little microphone.
That, okay. All set. Okay. Real quick, I typed it up. I am the original owner of Greenfields. I moved in in August 1969 in one of the models. I live across the street from the sewer system and can attest to all the problems we have had since then, with constant odors at nighttime, water trucks being brought in when we did not have enough water, trucks going in to fix the many, many problems we have had. I was informed that the construction on the water sewer system was only a fix and not an update. They could not afford it. Our expense for the fix is going to increase in our, oh, I can't talk, in our billing. We cannot afford to increase the amount of families that incur if permission is given to one person requesting a variance change allowing two-family units or less than an acre, because that will allow others to do the same. As it stands, our development has only houses under an acre. The person requesting the variance change has not lived in Greenfield since 2004. He wants to sell the unit as two-family, and based on that, he increased the asking price of $30,000 August 31st on Zillow. He just wants to make a big profit with no interest in our development. And I just wanted to say, I and a few neighbors attended the town meeting September 22nd requesting not to grant this variance. Two-family houses would allow two families in each dwelling. If this variance is granted, it opens up a bag of worms and a big impact on our water and sewer system. All homes are less than an acre. This, and this involves all homeowners. You should be notified about it. And also, I was told today that they didn't increase the water capacity for our, you know, for our water capacity. It's still the old 132,000 gallons per day, and it's still that. They couldn't afford to update that. So we're still going to have to be trucking your water as it is, the way it stands. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. I do want to just tell you and other neighbors, there is a water capacity problem, you are correct, or water quantity, as well as occasional water quality problems there.
Right.
But I've been working with the DCWWA and various council persons representing this district for the last 17 years. And so what I can tell you is, is that the reason why, it's not that they can't afford to find more water, there is no more water. The aquifer that serves this is at full capacity. So what they've explained to me, they're engineers over the years, and Ms. Moss can verify this, is that even if they drilled new wells, it would just cause the existing wellheads to lower its output. In other words, you can't get more water there without finding a brand-new site. And there's no site within the subdivision itself. You might be interested, all of you who live there, might be interested to know that every three or four years, there's sometimes a new owner, sometimes it's the same owner of the unbuilt condominium lots, the townhome lots, I should say, that are in the rear of your site. In each case, that the opponent, the owner, has not been able to move forward, because there is no water. They haven't been able to solve the water problem. There's also an issue of, back when this was approved as the townhomes, stormwater regulations and management were not what they are now. So they would have to come into conformance with current stormwater regulations, and that means that they would lose some density, because they'd have to lose some parcels. So in other words, the fact that there's limited water isn't something because it's just not, because there's not enough money for it. It's truly that there's no more capacity within the aquifer that serves this site. So I think all of us are very sensitive to the needs of the residents there, because I, yes, I can recall when there've been droughtier summers that water has been trucked in, and that's not a good thing for anybody. The next person who signed up is Kitty Brand, and I believe Kitty's here. I see her name. Ms. Brand, if you can unmute yourself, if you'd like to speak.
See, did that work? Did that work?
Yes, yes.
Wow, I'm getting good at this. Well, I did submit a letter already. That's part of the record now. But again, I have it, the issue with changing the whole essence of the community again. One thing I wanted to ask with the new information that you put out, with these, does the accessory apartment, is that like part of the same house, or is it like a totally separate unit and totally shut off? Like a, like in, like it is now as for a two-family house?
So in excess, I can hear you. An accessory apartment can be something that's completely shut off. That's why I said by build a firewall. Typically, that's what they are, that there, it's going to be someone would have their own entry and exit. So you would have to go through the main house. We do have instances of accessory apartments where they share an entrance, so you go into a vestibule, and then
That I've seen here.
Yeah, there's a separate entrance up there, so it just depends on how it's been designed. And there's also accessory apartments that can be over a garage. Those are considered accessory, too. The definition is really just along that it's got to be within a certain percentage, and I apologize, I should have looked that up, but there's only so many square feet that it can be, because it must be subordinate to the main house.
Okay. Do they have like separate utilities, and will all that may have to be installed, too?
Or
Not necessarily. Not necessarily, unnecessarily, because it depends on how the rent is structured. Typically, most people who own their homes, if they create an accessory apartment, they actually require a separate utility line, et cetera. But you could also say, I'm just going to keep you on my own electric bill, and let's say you have a fifth the size of my house, and so I'll divide the electricity bill up. That's not a smart thing to do to me, but it is possible. Typically, however, it's separate utilities entirely.
Yes, I think that, I think if that becomes a precedent in this community, I just personally, I don't think I would like it to have that many extra people coming in and, you know, living here and using the everything. Like I said in my letter, the community would, I think, would be detrimental to water sewer. That, that would be detrimental to that issue, and basically, that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you very much, and your comments, as I said, we take all comments seriously. The next person is, yes.
I'm sorry, we should ask the applicant to clarify whether this unit has separate water service. And I, I mean, I assume it's all running through the same thing, but we should be clear on that.
Tony, do you know?
Yes, it's, it's all in one, because like you said, my mom used to live there, and it was mainly used for our family, except for a few years now, that's all. And it has its own separate entrance and has an exit, so has its entrance from the side, so it doesn't need to go through the main house. And it was where the two-car garage was, and that's where the living space is.
The next person to sign up was Richard Carroll. Mr. Carroll, are you here? Also signed up was Kathleen Carroll, Ms. Carroll, are you here? The next person would be Ryan.
Yes, yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
Rich had to go to a meeting, he left already. I also just want to say that I always considered like an accessory apartment was more like a mom and pop or mother-daughter situation. And using unrelated families, I think, would put the pressure on our utilities. So I'm not too in favor of that.
Thank you, is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person would be Mr. Mc, I don't know how to say your last name, Ryan, McLeod or McLeod?
Hi, it's McLeod.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak. The only, the only concern I have is the fact that it would be, it seems like this person who currently owns it seemed to build an accessory apartment and is now trying to legalize it after the fact. The only concern I have is if the board grants variance for that, it's just opening the door to other people in the neighborhood doing the same thing. And then we run into a problem of potentially unrelated family members, unrelated people living in the house and possibly using more water. And as it's, as it's been said, we don't really have a whole lot of water, we don't have any more capacity. So until that gets fixed, I would be, I would hope the board would be opposed to granting, you know, further density in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Anything else you'd like to add, Ryan?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, and the next person who signed up would be Susan Jennings. Is Ms. Jennings here?
Yes, I'm here, thank you.
Would you like to speak?
Yes, I live directly next door, and I can attest to the fact that the owner has not lived there in many years and has been renting it out as a, a multifamily or two-family dwelling. If there is a problem next door, there is nobody to reach except to go to the tenants, which there have been problems in the past. And, you know, unresolved issues as far as that goes. Also, the excessive amounts of vehicles in and out of the property, the extra noise, and the fact that this apartment was built after the persons, the, the father of the family had passed away. You can see the difference in the siding on the outside, it, you know, that, that doesn't matter. What matters is the applicant knew that building permits were required to build this apartment because he was notified previously and had built another structure that the town made him take down because there were no permits at that time either. So it is like backtracking, trying to legalize something that the owner knew was illegal to do, to begin with, and now just wants to cash out and, and, and go without having to take this apartment out or rectify the problem. Now, the house on the other side of me, when that house sold, they had to rip everything out downstairs. And then they sold the, they sold the house. It's just the way, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't approved, it wasn't up to code. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you, and those were good comments. If I want to summarize, I think you would say that, or what you'd say is that, that in some ca, in many cases, we should be thinking about making him remove the apartment because rather than legalizing the extra unit, and your argument would be that because they knew it was illegal at the time.
They knew that it was illegal at the time, but the, the point is, is that the, the owner is not, is not on site and has not been on site and has been collecting rent from two different families and has been paying taxes as a single-family property owner. You know, that's not fair to the town, it's not fair to the rest of us. And not being on site when there is a problem, who do you go to? You know, there's nobody to go to except the people who are renting from this person. And in that case, it's, it's neither fair to them or to us as neighbors.
Thank you, those are very good comments. I don't have anyone else signed up. Would, would, would there be anybody else who'd like to speak about this application tonight from members of the public? Tammy is here. She just is not muted, she's not unmuted, sorry. Ms. Sheehan, do you want to speak?
Yes, I'm sorry, I, this is my first time zooming, so forgive me.
Oh, wow, lucky you.
So I completely agree with Ms. Jennings. You, you don't get to do something and then try to get it passed thereafter. I've only been a resident here for just short of three years. It's a quiet neighborhood, it's lovely. You know, all of us kind of got, we've had issues with the sewer, we've had issues with the water. We're just now receiving bills for those same things. I do agree that there's probably going to be an issue with traffic. And again, as Ms. Jennings said, who's going to monitor the owner being on the property? You know, if they, if they haven't been here and they've been doing it kind of, you know, in a sly way, what, what's to say that they don't continue that? I don't think it's fair, and you don't get to do something and, you know, and, and just kind of try to reroute the situation to get the approval, that's not fair.
Thank you, and welcome to Hyde Park belatedly, if you've only been here three years. We love talking to new residents, so thank you as well for joining us tonight. Would there be anybody else? Yes.
Thank you.
Chairman, can I have just a small rebuttal on what?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So I just want to, for, for, for the record, to state the, the facts and the truth, and people are speculating and shooting from the head. I did not, can you hear me, I'm sorry?
Yes.
Oh, okay, so I did not do this apartment, it was done by my father. And regarding the new siding, I mean, we did put new siding on the house after the apartment was built. This, this apartment was done a long time ago by my parents. And I got married, I had kids, and my mom used to live downstairs, but I didn't do it personally. And I'm not trying to backtrack, I, it wasn't done by me, I'm just trying to legalize everything and trying to do things right. Whereas there are some people that currently have apartments and illegal living space downstairs, like my neighbor Susan Jennings, who took out her garage door and has, has a regular door there. She has living space in her garage right now, and she has the nerve of talking about me not having illegal space. At least I'm trying to legalize it. Whether it's for sale, if I can't sell it, I'm going to have to rent it, I have to rent the whole thing out. I'm not going to rent out two different spaces. But what I'm saying is, these people are phony because they're talking about me, and yet they have illegal spaces themselves. So it wasn't done by me, I'm trying to make it legal, I'm trying to make it right, and I'm getting chewed for that, and it's, it's, I don't think that's fair.
It's never fun for us to hear neighborly disputes, in which case there's a lot of that here. I do want to add though, that in terms of Ms. Jennings, I don't believe it's illegal to convert garage space into living space. Would that it's, it's, would be illegal to convert it into an extra apartment, living space in other words, it would not be used by her but rented out commercially without an approval. And in your case, I understand that you are trying to legalize the situation as well. I know you'll be meeting with Ms. Moss to discuss how to change, revise the application from two-family to accessory apartment. That does make a difference because of the owner occupancy, as has been discussed as well.
And we've been owners for 35 years of this house, Mike, I never had a complaint by any neighbor. And the num, the number of cars there in that parking lot is only two, because every time the person that would live in that apartment is only going to be one person because of the size of the place, it's only can fit one person. And I had less cars than Susan Jennings has four or five cars constantly in her driveway. And she's complaining about the amount of cars, why don't you take a video and see how many cars are in my driveway and compare? So don't, don't make up false accusations, lies, when you can't back up what you're saying. So this is, this is a defamatory right here, it's bogus, and these, what they're saying is not true.
Ms. Pollard, did you want to weigh in?
Well, I don't, I don't want to address those particular concerns, but this was a type-two action because it's a, would go from a single-family to a two-family home. So there's no seeker review, and the board did not circulate to any involved or interested agencies because of that. Given the testimony that we've heard tonight about the water and sewer issues, I wonder if the town wants to refer this to DCWWA, so to see if they have any comments on whether or not there's capacity to handle an additional unit.
Board members, do you want to weigh in on that?
Sounds like a good idea to me.
I agree. I agree also, listening to comments this evening, it seems the most alarming and concerning fact to me is lack of water. And so I'm curious how that's going to be rectified, rather than adding one person into the property. I mean, it seems to be a neighborhood-wide issue.
And just for everyone's edification, I did informally notify DCWWA because we had been, or I'd been contacted a while back. And we have things like this just to give them a heads up because they noted for themselves to say, oh, is this, you know, is water going up, et cetera? So, but we can refer it over to them quite easily. One of us, I think, can just give up our sets of paper plans to refer over. Do we need a motion to do that, Victoria, I think?
Yes.
Ms. Dexter, would you make the motion to refer this as a courtesy to the Tatchis County Water and Wastewater Authority?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Stephanie Wasser.
Any, any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No, any extensions or nays? They're being known, the motion carries unanimously. And since we've heard probably all we're going to hear tonight, and we'll need to hear back from DCWA, and the ZBA still must grant the density variance, and they have not done so, and they don't meet until the 27th. I'm making a motion to adjourn the public hearing on this to our November 3rd meeting.
I'll make that motion, Brett Pickett.
Second and wiser.
All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Neshawat and any neighbors who want to come back on the 4th, we'll see you then. Thank you very much, all of you, for your time and interest tonight.
Is it the 4th, is it the 4th or the 3rd? I think I heard you say the 4th, and I see the 3rd.
I'm sorry, it's November 3rd.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. The next item, yes, yes.
Two things, if he comes back that, that they're saying, okay, you're at your maximum, you cannot handle one more accessory dwelling. A, do we have to abide by that legally?
That would be a legal question from Ms. Pollard.
Your accessory apartment regulations require Department of Health approval. I think we would read it to also mean DCWWA where they have the jurisdiction over the water and sewer. Grant it, but they wouldn't be able to ever get a CO for the apartment because they would never be able to have the water service.
And, and would the whole development need to have the number of accessory apartments that are already existing be part of this discussion? You know, is it the last one coming in, does that one legally is the only one with the burden?
So, I mean, again, I'm not aware, there's nothing in our planning board record at this point of other accessory apartments in the neighborhood.
There is on Rockledge Road and on Windmill Road.
Okay, but we just don't have that information before us right now, and we don't know.
Is there any way we can get that, Victoria?
So I've asked.
Said he'd supply it.
I've asked Mr. Nash to give us the addresses, and then the building department can go through and look to see if, if there are permits for any of those.
Yes, there are. It was done, it was done a long time ago with, when, when, when Mr. Handley was the building inspector.
Wow, way, way longer.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we've been in that area for a very long time, we've been excellent citizens and law-abiding citizens, and it's just made, just made out to, to, to me that, you know, I'm sly and doing things behind the scene, I mean, this was, this house was not my house, it was my parents' house. And I inherited it this way, I'm trying to make it right, that's all.
Thank you, Victoria.
So thank you, we'll wait to, Mr. Neshawat, please get us the list as soon as you can of any other accessory apartments, and we'll get this referred out tomorrow. A note, our planning board secretary is not with us tonight, but this meeting is recorded, so she'll be able to go through it.
Will that get these people in trouble, Mr. Chairman, that these people that I'm going to be giving the names now, will they be in trouble because of this?
You don't have to give the names, just the addresses, but I think this would be relevant also for your ZBA application. I know, I believe that Mr. Logan requested that there be some analysis to see if there were other accessory apartments or two-family units or two-family dwellings that were legally approved in the neighborhood itself. I know Mr. McLeod asked me today by email if I knew if there were other variances given. And all I could say was that in the 17 years that Anne and I have been on the planning board, the last 17 years, we've had no applications for accessory apartments or two-family dwellings in this neighborhood, so.
Yeah. That's the only knowledge I have. It was before that time, Mr. Department.
But, but if an investigation is done and there are illegal apartments, there are very well, very well may be letters going out.
So they are legal, they're legalized, I know that for sure, yeah.
And if they're legalized, it won't get them, it won't get, there shouldn't be any trouble whatsoever.
Okay.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion on that application topic, then the next item is into workshop, no more public hearings. And this is for Bella Field at Hyde Park, an amended concept plan. I think most everyone knows that this is the 339-plus acre parcel across from the Culinary Institute of America. There have been various improvements made, but under the former concept plan that was approved back in 2007, the applicant has worked steadily to change that, and this will be the next meeting that we've had. Any of those who saw our last meeting when we were still meeting in person, I apologize that we were masked so that some people could not hear us. But Ms. Van Thiel, the attorney representing the applicant, I think sort of summed everything up for the applicants by saying they were stunned that they heard so many negative comments and that they felt like there might be less communication than what should have happened. So I want to inform anybody in the audience interested in viewing this that we have had a series of offline discussions and also reviews, where we've reviewed things, sent them on to our planning consultant, she's added comments, they've gone to the applicants. Those have been sent back, we've had some discussions. I think that everybody understands now better what this project is than we did beforehand, so yes, Ms. Van Thiel, you're appearing now. You were right, the communication really did help because particularly for me on the food manufacturing, you know, it was just sort of a statement there that I thought meant that you're going to have trucks coming in and out hauling things, and it turns out that wasn't the case, so. So let me turn it over to you guys. And first I'll just announce that Mr. Boudreau no longer works for Chasen. He is now working for the applicant. So he is the applicant rather than representing him. Congratulations, Larry and Tom, on that success. And I'll turn it over to you.
Wow, you're still trying to connect.
Yeah, can you hear me? I'm on my cell phone as well.
I hear you.
Yep.
Okay, great. So yeah, everything moved very quickly and I'm here at this trailer and I'm still trying to get all the communications set up. So this is kind of weird, but anyway, thank you very much. We are certainly communicating very well. We've worked very hard since our last presentation, which was made September first. Worked from September first to September twenty ninth to, to make that, you know, robust, the middle. Gosh, so much information to, to absorb in a short amount of time because we submitted it September twenty ninth, which was last week. So thank you to the board for receiving it. It's a lot of information. I want to go over the highlights here. And I wanted to start with, with recognizing the team because we're not all together. We're all over the place. Nicole and Nick, Ron from Hart Howerton, of course, Jennifer, Annie, the whole Bellfield team is on. And we're here, very excited to continue to move this, this project forward. Neil, are you able to present the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Great.
Can you see it, Larry?
Not yet.
Can everybody else see it?
Yes.
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 Okay.
We can see it.
All right. I don't see it. I have it in front of me. I'll just call out the slide. So slide one, the, the, the presentation tonight. I'm going to go through what was submitted on nine twenty nine. Again, all the documents, the next series of slides are going to address in a high level what, what we updated, what we addressed as a result of meeting with the, the board and stakeholders. After that, we do have two figures in the PowerPoint. Figure two and seven, two is the program concept, which, which has been updated to reflect the changes we were talking about over the last month. And then figure seven are site sections. So we had one previously, we added another one to that. Nicole will be addressing that. There you go, I see it now. Thank you. We'll be addressing that. And then next would be the secret items, which we've been discussing. I'm going to highlight mainly in this presentation, the visual. We were asked to go do a zone of visibility for the site five miles out. And I'll go through what, what we did there. And then the last thing we want to do is talk about setting up the sidewalk and, and the kind of things that we like to get done prior to you coming out there. So we can go to the next slide. Yeah, this, this here, you know, everybody knows this, but just thought we would just, again, highlight this is a big team effort to get this done. And again, I know everybody knows that, but working real hard with our team internally to make this presentation and to respond to, to, to the town's questions. Okay, next one. Great. So again, September first, after that meeting, we received planning board comments, which were very, very helpful to do. We received them in a, in a word format along with the consultant comments. So we did get some comments, you know, from Pete's team, Tad, and of course Bonnie. And we formatted those and we presented those. And the first response to comments, all that is, is, is in there. Very, very helpful to us to understand where the town is coming from. A lot of good catches, so we appreciate that. This, this is, and I tell everybody here is a very complex job and to pull it all together, we don't always quite get, get, get everything. So we do appreciate that. The project narrative, we have updates to that, the project narrative and seeker comparison. So those are separate docs. The consolidated site plan set, you might remember in the September first, we had the Hart Howerton set and we had the Chasen set. So what we did, and we had, you know, a separate existing condition set. So we pulled all that together into what we're calling the consolidated set. It's a seventeen sheet set as one, one thirty by forty two set. The design guidelines submitted as amended, traffic engineering memo, the updated memo, which we went back and forth with on Pete's team. And I'll get to that in a little bit. We submitted the supplemental phase one B archaeology, archaeology report, which had to be done. And we went through several rounds with SHPO, hired a consultant, you know, to respond to that. And we did get the response, a favorable response back from, from SHPO. We were asked to submit the geotechnical report for the whole site, which we had done previously for oh seven, so that's in there. The ETR report is updated because, of course, we had to update that for the entire site for Speedy's permit. So that, those items there make up our, our seminal, which was made on the twenty ninth. So a whole lot of information to go through. And I'll hit the, you know, the high levels. So list of updates. So what does this middle include? You'll, you'll see in there under the, and actually I did, I did pull it out here, but it's in the amended put concept development plan. We do have the, the visibility analysis in there. And all of the the methodology, methodology that was used to do that. And it's all in there. And again, I'm going to hit the high level of that. But what we did do as asked by the boards, we, we looked at three study points. One was the hotel, and then there were two where the townhouses are located in the terrace neighborhood. There's two bridges there and we've identified two spots there to look at as well. We update, updated the bulk table. One thing that was helpful to that is we color coded it to match the Hart Howerton figure four. We, you know, again, after discussions between September first and the twenty ninth, we made adjustments and updated the bulk table for the massing breaks to not exceed a hundred feet. Clarification on the height measurements was, was made. Minimum lot size for a single family, the single family in the development includes the cottages and, and the state lots. And so we define those in there cottages as eighty foot minimum width and the state lots is a hundred. Again, the bulk table all updated. Compliance with the put overlay and the Bellfield Development District added attachment document. So again, Karen, our planner, because this was a, we were asked to do, there are so many documents going around. We spent a lot of time making sure there's consistency throughout, and that's, that's what that addressed. There were some questions on the parking garages. We clarified that and we provided a parking table in the documents. Of course, the question with the parking garages on the southern one, is it there or not? We determined that it is in fact there, we're planning on it. And we noted that, and we made adjustments to the site plan to accommodate it. We added more information on the construction phasing for, for phase two A. We're pretty confident with that going forward. But we showed that, showed the adjustments to the site plan. Doesn't affect phase two A. But we did bring more clarification to, to that as well. And we provided the mapping in there. Clarification on the food production. Chairman started off with this and it was helpful to clarify that. Traffic, we, we tackled that right from the get go. And we dealt with the maximum square footage of the food production, even though the website might have said two hundred thousand, the max on this plan is fifteen. Revisions to the traffic analysis includes these, these three incorporated, the public events. So public events would be the amphitheater that was there and that previously, previously was not included. So we did include it. And we confirmed the consideration of delivery vehicles going into the, the food production facilities. There was a question on hotel villas as hotel commercial space. So we clarified that. We updated the trail map. Hart Howerton's.
Large files. I send them free.
We also added.
We transfer dot com.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, not everyone's on mute.
Okay, great. We added the trailhead parking for offsite users that want to use the trail that was on the oh seven plan. So we added it here. There are concept changes, which, which Nicole can get into when she speaks to the figures. But they include, of course, the parking deck and how we deal with screening that, bringing clarification to the townhomes, which was a question that came up, delineating the cottages versus state lots, and we delineated that as well. It was asked by Tad and Pete, you know, the understanding of earthwork. So we have modeled the earthwork to understand, obviously, the costs associated with the project. So we provided that as figure eleven. We also have a road profile of the main road, which we call the Omega Road, you know, right from Saran Bay vocabulary. And we profiled that so you could see how it fits in there. It does, in fact, fit in there very nicely. The earthwork counts going back to that, the total cut, it's a, it's a balanced job, cut and fill, you know, six hundred thousand cut and a little less than that fill, which includes a shrinkage factor. One of the other things that came up on the next one was identifying the minor roads and the width of those roads. So we added that detail to figure thirteen. A roadway map, which identifies all the roads throughout Bellfield, the road widths, whether they have sidewalks and not sidewalks, whether they have curbs or not, all that's in there. There was a question on fee simple versus not fee simple. So we identified that. We did update the the, the, the EAF to identify that we anticipate no wetland impacts right now as we're, we're still waiting on the JD, we're very close to getting it. But we don't have it yet. Assuming that JD holds, we're not going to impact any wetlands.
Larry, do you want, Larry Rutherford, using JDs, do you want to just use the full term in case there's people in the audience who don't know the jurisdictional?
Determination, right.
Just put that in there, sorry.
Yep, no, no, you're right, you're right. I take it, I take it for granted, use it so much. But to give the board an update, we're hoping to get that soon. And as soon as we, we do, then we'll be able to answer that question. The design guidelines have been updated. And again, Nicole can speak to that. She'll be coming up in a minute. We go to the next one. Yeah, and this is where she'll take the next two slides, seven and eight.
Great, thanks, Larry.
Yep.
Thanks, Neil, and board members and members of the public for being flexible and able to pivot in, in a year like this. So glad everyone can hear and I'm pretty, I'm very impressed with the live on YouTube at the same time simulcast. So for those of you watching via YouTube. Nicole Lemmons from Hart Howerton, we've been introduced in previous meetings. But for those members of the public who haven't met the team, as Larry showed, there's a much larger team behind this project. It's a very important project. It's a significant project for the region. We feel as professionals in the region, working all over the country, Hart Howerton is planning and architecture, landscape, architecture and design thinkers, that this could be a bellwether for the type of property that can be integrated into a larger region and existing community planned for and out of the cultures and traditions of the area. So with that in mind, the team that has been assembled, leading experts and consultants, technical consultants, really, it really comes down to sitting down with those of you that we've had some informal meetings with, getting the feedback that really will craft this to make sure that it's a plan that can be implemented and built for the community. So we have been putting together, and you have a lot of information in front of you. But in this latest round of revisions, what we've sought to do alongside your planning consultant is to provide some clarity to the information that's been provided previously. And in some cases, what we have done is provide more of a visual graphic so that when there is a chart, a bulk chart, for example, it can key to our figure four. And then also here, you're seeing clarity on the single family detached, where we've articulated what is slated to be a cottage lot versus an estate lot. And we really show the range of product that is planned for here at Bellfield. That is residential product and then as well as the residential product, 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 the mixed use and commercial, we've talked a little bit more about, and some of that has been in the responses to comments and informal conversations about how the retail and the, the commercial component is really born out of the traditions in the region, businesses and enterprises, local businesses and enterprises who have really started their practice, be it a bakery or wine or dining establishment out of a region that, that very, is very much, I would say, kind of gathered around the traditions of, of the level of cuisine coming out of the teachings of the CIA, for example, but also very much tied to Duchess County and the farming traditions. So this, it's a lot about food and, and also about integrating and measure of the retail with demonstration for, you know, how the bread is made, what are the ingredients? Where are they coming from? And that really is further defined in some of the explanations of agrihood that would be specific to Bellfield. What are those plants? What are those products out of a small demonstration, demonstration farm that could supplement retail and commercial component and for tourists and residents? So this is a diagram that starts to illustrate the various product type. Other questions and, and comments that, that were raised, asking for additional clarity. There, there's much more in the materials provided. We pulled a couple diagrams tonight. Clarification on the entire breadth of the site. It's two hundred feet in grade change where development occurs. But it's by the way the crow flies, it's over a quarter mile from plan north to south. And that next slide, Neil, if you don't mind forwarding, now shows, and rather than just zooming in on one neighborhood, shows the context of the Ridge neighborhood and the Terrace neighborhood to the lower Main Street. By the, by the Omega Road, the distance is greater, but the section that's cut through the site where those red lines are shown on the plan, roughly two thousand feet. roughly 2,000 feet from north to south or from image left to image right, and show how the plan development is to be integrated into the topography of the existing land there at Bellfield. So we, I know there's a lot of information. We're here tonight for questions and continue the conversation, appreciate all the input we've received to date, and hope I can be available to answer anything else tonight, thank you.
Great, thank you Nicole, can you, Neil, can you just back up one slide real quick? I want to point out, alright, so see the dark blue in the bottom right? That is the community use, community facility, tax exempt. That was moved, it previously was up on the Main Street. We moved it so that it now, you know, blocks the parking, the second parking that's proposed as that gray, gray box behind it. So wanted to point that out, okay, you can go to the next one. Next one. Alright, so I want to address a couple of the seeker items. Before I get into the visual, the traffic, again, the Chasen's team has worked with CPL on the review of that, and Pete can give an update, but we've been, this will take me a little bit, but Chasen has been responding to it, and I did get an email from our traffic engineer this morning that I believe CPL is all set. There might be a few more, but I think we've really advanced that. And we advanced it because we really drilled down into what the planning board's concerns were. On the visual, again, we did the zone of, and you can go to the next slide. The zone of visibility, and again, we looked at three locations. I did also include in this PowerPoint, submit it to Neil, the map for that, it's, you know, a complex map. We could go over it if the board wants to, but we were directed three locations, five-mile radius, and at each of these locations, we studied four different points. And for the townhouses, it was three feet, 20, 35, and 50, and that's Hotel 3, 45, 16, 75. So when you look at that map, as the colors get darker, you'll see more of the building, which makes sense, that you go higher in elevation, you'll be able to see more of the buildings. But what's interesting about it is that it's probably, we also show the rings at 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 miles, so you can see, you know, where you're at at a possible view location of either the hotel or the townhouses. And it's 3, 4, 5, you know, 3, 4, 5 miles out. And then on the view shot of the landscape, looking that far over the river, would, you know, would be a minor feature in the view landscape. And again, that's presented, we scrambled and got that done, and we can discuss that further. Next slide. And here are the revisions to the traffic, I wanted to call them out. Incorporates the public events, we also took into consideration the Village Green, which would be used by the buildings that surround it, whether it's the, you know, the winery, City Winery, or the cider mill, or the brewery. We took that into consideration along with the amphitheater as well. We already, and we confirmed the, I wanted to make sure that we were all confirmed on the food production uses and areas defined for that. And of course, we coordinated with CPL. Okay? And then on community character, we've been going back and forth on the 150-foot Route 9 setback and what that's going to look like. We have an idea, we presented an idea, but I really think it's best if we pick up that discussion out in a sidewalk, which I'll talk about in a minute, and in order to respond to exactly what the town is looking for and what our, you know, hopes are for that area as well. The housing types, that in that figure previously presented, it shows a mix of housing, it's not just estate lots, there's, you know, condo flats through state lots, cottages. And what I wanted to do with Tom is take him out to Pine Hills. Now Pine Hills, I mentioned last time, but that's a project I was involved in for five years. Very successful, large development, and he and I toured that with Bellfield yesterday. I wanted him to see what was going on out there, why it was done the way it was, and how that could relate to Bellfield. Next slide. So here on the sidewalk, there's some things I want to get done before the board comes out there, and here's my list, if you wanted more, I would need to know that. But I do want to flag out the center line of the Village Neighborhood and Main Street. I do want to flag the 150-foot setbacks off of nine so that everybody can see where that falls. I do want to flag out some key buildings like the City Winery, and if there's anything else that the board might want to see. So I'm going to need some time to do this, I expect I could have it done by the end of next week, so the following week is the week of October 18th. And so in this slide, we're suggesting noon on October 20th, if that, if that works, if not, we'll figure something out. And that's it, I'd like to turn it over back to you, Michael, thank you.
And just think that was really just a praisey of all the information you gave us, and it was still pretty lengthy.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I know that I haven't had a chance to go through everything, but most, let me start first with the site visit, because I think that's going to be kind of the next sort of critical thing we have here. Chris and Ann both work during the day, so I don't think that that would be ideal for you guys to do a noon sidewalk, right?
I can make myself available if it's an issue.
Okay. You're still muted too, Ann.
Same here, I'm just checking, looking, see what's going on, but I usually can break away on the 20th. I could do it on the 20th, yes.
And all I have on the 20th so far is that we have our planning board meeting in the evening at 6:00. So do the rest of the board members think that's a good date? Stephanie, Ann, Brett says yes.
That's your birthday.
It is my birthday, I'll be happy to be celebrating with everybody.
Awesome.
Oh, cool. On the 20th.
Yes.
At what time?
Noon.
Noon?
How long will it be?
I think you're looking at two hours minimum.
Yeah, yep.
Ted and I've walked this site before, Ann and I've walked this site before. I've walked it a lot of times with different people, and it's just, it's, you know, it's a large site, even the developed area is a large site. So Peter, if you want to attend, and Bonnie, would that make sense to you to come at noon on that day as well?
Yeah, I'm good.
Good as well. I'm good.
And Victoria, if you want to join us?
I think I will join for part of it, to get my bearings on this one. So we, I know we have a planning board meeting that night, so.
Right.
Will we need to advertise?
I think in this case we should, because otherwise we're really limited in terms of discussing things. So.
If you advertise as a meeting, though, we have to make sure that the public understands where the meeting point would be for them to come and observe the meeting. And, you know, applicant has to allow them on the property.
This is true. So if we don't advertise, then that means that all of us, all the planning board members have to be silent around each other and to the applicants. If we advertise, it means that there may be some people, residents, who'd like to join us and attend. Larry and Tom, and Jennifer, that's really your call, do you prefer that we become ghosts on the walk, ourselves, just walking around like zombies with no speech abilities? Or would you like for us to advertise with the?
You can, you can kind of catch that one, Michael. You can talk to the applicant and ask questions, it's just, you know, the conversation amongst yourselves is limited.
In other words, and we wouldn't be able to, I can't really ask questions of the applicants if they would answer to all seven people, is what I'm trying to say.
No, generally, it's a fact-finding mission, so the applicant can provide information to everyone.
Ah, okay.
Deliberating amongst yourselves, that's problematic. And if you do get answers, you know, the best practice is to go back and do a memo after your sidewalk, memorializing what you saw, what you observed, and then that can become part of the public record.
As you know, I do that, so it sounds like we don't have to advertise, then we'll just go ahead and schedule a site visit. And as of now, that's October 20th at noon. And is there a certain place you want to start at, Larry?
Yeah, I will, I will put together an agenda, I'm still thinking about how to stage it and make it very efficient for us.
So as long as you're going to be flagging things, can you also flag the locations on St. Andrews, where you would have the entry for the restaurant as well as for the main, the road?
Alright, so you, the.
Locations on St., yeah, just the locations on St. Andrews. The reason why I ask that is, as part of another application, we were provided, I believe it was from 19, it's like 1970, sorry, before there was the county legislature, there was a House of Representatives run by the county. That was the term, and the then House, or the representatives, did declare St. Andrews a limited access road, and a limited access road would be limited access points. I don't know that, I'll send you the document, it's, you know, pretty old, it's in old typewriting. But it shows locations where three were approved at the time, the access points. One of them looks as though it's where Carol's Hot Dogs is located. That seems to be an approved one, then there's another one located further east, and then a final one located further east that appears to be on the applicant's land that we're dealing with. So I wanted to provide those to you, but also just see how far they are. And by the way, the point, the entrances and exits that were approved are pretty grandiose, they're like clovers and stuff, I mean, it's pretty, I was sort of surprised. But at any rate, and we have a bit of minutes there.
I'll get it marked.
And then when I go around to consultants, if they think that there's another location that you should flag, we'll let them. So let me start with the consultants, and I'll start with Mr. Sajero, Pete.
Hi, good evening. Yeah, so in regards to the traffic, we did have a meeting, a virtual meeting last week with Ben Wolfe, our traffic consultant out of our Latham office, and Tom Johnson from Chasen's office. And Ben had had a chance to review all the past information from the 2007 plan to the current information. So he went through the traffic, you know, report. There was some additional documentation, as Larry pointed out, to compare the change in uses from, you know, the current plan to what was like proposed before, will have an effect on the traffic like numbers. And in a nutshell, Ben, and we're going to issue a memo on this, because it just, you know, happened. But Ben's going to issue a memo that I'll go over that basically setting concept that we do agree with the numbers that Chasen, you know, presented. However, I did, I did bring up in an email that, you know, our office is okay, it's not, you know, the be-all and end-all, that we still need to get feedback back from the County Public Works Department on the access to St. Andrews and make sure that they're on board with the updated, you know, report. And the same goes for the Department of Transportation. You know, the report concludes that that the improvements that were put in on 9 are sufficient to handle traffic, you know, projections from the updated concept plan. What I don't, what I don't remember, and I'm not sure that Tom Johnson was even up on it, whether there was ever any improvements proposed on St. Andrews Road, I don't believe that there were.
Intersection there, it was proposed to have a separate right-turn lane.
No, 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 at the intersection, yes, at the intersection, but I mean, they had a separate, they had a separate access onto the limited access, you know, highway, so I just don't remember whether there was any improvements on St. Andrews Road itself as you get further back in, I don't believe so.
There were none, back then Councilman Perkins, if you recall, wanted a drive, like a, well, someone you could walk and drive over St. Andrews to access it. And both the DCD, and he also wanted the same thing at DOT when he was on the town board, but DOT rejected that, as did DCDPW. And of course, the applicants, back then a different team, also didn't want to incur that. And I believe that most of the public, including the planning board, thought they would change the character of Hyde Park to have, you know, this popover above a state highway, et cetera.
Yeah. Did we circulate this information? I just want to make sure that the traffic information is getting to County DPW and DOT. How are we doing that?
Victoria can respond, I thought that she wanted to, but yes, we did circulate for lead agency.
But we circulated, right, but they haven't, they haven't like received copies of the traffic.
I don't think we've provided the updated information yet, I'd have to follow up with.
We have not, so when we circulated, Cynthia, Ms. Whitman, our secretary, gave both the link to the digital data that we had at the time, which is also posted on the town website. So she sent, she forwarded everything that was digitally presented to us. And then she also, in some cases, had paper copies delivered too. But none of this newer information has gone out, and we still haven't heard from DOT, I believe, DEC. We've heard back from some interested agencies, as well as, I think, they've clarified from, I think, maybe Department of Health, but there's still outstanding responses, even though it's been past three days.
Alright, well, why doesn't our office touch base with the traffic folks for both of those agencies? And if they don't have the information, we'll make arrangements through Larry to make sure that they get that, because we do want some feedback from them before we get around to making any decisions on that. Larry, who's the, who's the current traffic person over in the DOT now? I know they change a lot, do you know?
Yeah, Tom could answer that. He speaks to me every day. Gosh, doesn't.
Or you can email it to me, just go email it to me.
There's like three, you know, three guys we go back and forth with.
Alright, so just, you know, email that to me when you get a minute.
But I did want to give you an update, you know, as you know, the intersection, the full, you know, full intersection at the culinary and Bellfield, that's complete, they had some minor punch items on. We're going to pave the northern section of the right-in, right-out in about a month, and then we're going to try to close out this permit by the end of the year. So they're still holding 100K bond on us. So when you do call them, that's where we're at with it.
Alright, so, you know, the other thing for our office was, besides traffic, was taking a look at the stormwater. We did have a, we did have a call a few weeks ago with Kyle Ahern from Chasen and Ted, and we discussed like parameters on what we'd like to see from a conceptual level in this concept plan review. Larry, I apologize, I didn't get a chance to look at what you.
No worries, yeah.
Was there anything in there on, you know, drainage, or that's going to follow?
Kyle did, you know, he has a response in there, so I asked him to give me a response. Last thing I did at Chasen was do this letter, response letter, so it's in there.
Alright, we'll take a look at it.
Take a look at it, but what we did do is we did provide the earthwork for the whole site. We're showing you how we're managing the dirt in each neighborhood. And we did profile the Omega Road, so you can see. And we did profile the Omega Road. So you can see, yes, it does in fact fit in there and the grades we're working with.
All right. Uh, that's it, you know, for us. So we will, uh, uh, in the coming weeks, we'll take a look at the drainage and I'll also get with Ben and we'll formulate a memo on the traffic and we'll also reach out to both DOT and DPW as far as the traffic goes.
That's perfect. Thank you, Peter, because that I think will help expedite the review as we go forward by getting DOT and DPW involved now. I also just want to add that Pete had told me a couple of days ago that they were in basic agreement with the traffic impact study numbers provided by Chasen. So that's all good. Ms. Franson, comments?
So I've really preliminarily begun to review all the materials that were submitted, but I will say that I very much appreciate the reorganization of the development plan. I think it really helps lay out all the parameters of the development, whether it's the actual building program, the neighborhoods, the phasing. You know, you've added information as far as secondary roads, cross sections, much of what we had suggested would help again, provide better clarity to what's being proposed. In terms of additional sites that we might want to visit on the site for the, for the visit itself, I'm thinking the ridge area with the townhouse development is being proposed because again, it's sort of at the top of then steeply sloping bridge. And that's a high point and, and you may have covered these, but the other was the Upper Hotel, which is also going to be prominent. Definitely would like to, to visit those locations. And then I would just ask Larry in the same vein as New York State DOT, I imagine you're, are you consulting with DEC to also make sure any of the revisions, et cetera, are being reviewed by them timely to, to be able to provide the town with responses?
And in regards to, to what, we have a whole bunch of information at their office right now that they're reviewing, of course, the ETR stuff, the whole Speedy's update and that's, these update required a bunch of things to get done, including, you know, having the jurisdictional determination completed by the Corps.
Yeah, I know you've been working on wetlands. It was in particular the ETR. I know, you know, Pete's addressing the SWIP and, and engineers will address that, but the, but the ETR because of the Blandings turtle.
They, they have it. They have it.
Great. And then in terms of, I think, some additional discussion this evening, can you describe how you might have changed the ridge area? You said that you further, I think, defined and refined the townhouse concept up there. And I'm curious, after we had had our discussions, how you went about and how you might have rethought that area or further refined it?
Well, I can speak to that and Nicole could, could follow up, but what was shown were the actual lots on the, on the northeast section of of the terrace. And so they actually pulled in the building footprint itself. So when you look at you'll see that difference between the first and now, you'll see the footprints in that, in that northeast section.
When we're talking about that section, we're talking about the terrace and those two fingers that follow two ridges.
Yep.
Right. I just want to make sure that we're all talking about the same area. Thank you.
Yeah, I apologize. I'm referring to it as a ridge, but it's a terrace. Thank you. Townhouse area. Thank you, Stephanie.
It's fine.
It's, it's the terrorist neighborhood on two ridges. So it does.
Yeah.
And then I think related to that, one of the questions that existed for the townhouses was, and again, you have provided the secondary road cross section, which is helpful. Parking as far as they will be garages, you do have ability to access the units. You, I think you examine that and, and that is also further detail, correct?
Correct. Very easy to provide more, you know, these quick thumbnail sketches really prove out, you know, any area of concern. If you have any more on a sidewalk, if you need more clarification, we can provide it.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Franson. Ms. Polidoro, any comments?
I have not had a chance to go through the new submission yet.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Moss?
No comments.
And board members, let me start to my, when we're in public, right? Ms. Denapoli?
I'm going to be joining the other consultants and make a statement that I have not had an opportunity to go through this. I've kind of skimmed through the comment response letters. And I do have a couple of questions. For the second hotel, has there been a recent market study on the viability of, of the second hotel?
No.
No, we, we have not done a second feasibility for that yet. It's, it's too, it's too premature right now.
Okay.
It's going to be based a lot on, on, you know, the new trends going on in the market.
Because that was my concern. Because the, the market is rapidly changing. And now I even hear that Airbnb is maybe losing some of its panache. So you don't know what the next thing is going to be. So I was concerned about having two very large hotels on one property.
Yeah, they're, they're different, they're different category hotels.
Right.
The current one is, I would consider it a three and a half star type hotel. Horse's feet, hundred and thirty extended stay. The second hotel will have a full blown amenity package, which will tie in with residences in the area as part of the support on that. But that will be more of an four and a half star category.
I'll go for five star time.
Well, but the service is very expensive and if you want to be one of the new investors in it, we'd love to have you onboard.
So is, if the whole second hotel was not built, what would you put in its place or would you put anything?
No, it's, 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 there are twenty five million tourists a year that come to the Hudson Valley. Compare that obviously to the Napa Valley, which has less than four million. There is a huge demand for quality hotels in the market, especially this location. I don't see that as being an issue.
Okay.
Just getting it up and running. It's integrated. That second hotel is integrated very, very, very much so in the entire project. This is an integrated village and it feeds off each other. These are not separate silos in each zone. It's, and, and that's integral to the, to the entire program. So that we're going to get that hotel up and it's, it's well needed. And I think there's a lot of detail that will come out on that soon enough.
Which is, which would be a click thing. And, and in terms of the agrihood, and again, I don't know how you go about it as a developer. How do you assess the interest and the need and the desire for an agrihood and for specifically this location?
Well, I can, I can let Nicole answer or Nick, but from our point of view, we've looked at the agrihoods that are, have grown in the last fifteen or twenty years and the various locations and doing a lot of analysis as far as surveys and tastemaker surveys and broker surveys and what have you. And the demand, whether it's New York City demand, local demand or what have you, is, is fairly substantial in today's market about having local sources to food and demonstration education and so forth. And Annie Farrell actually can speak a little upon that as well as Nicole or Nick.
Just also just thinking about what are the attractions today of Hyde Park? What are the elements? What are the cultural elements that, you know, resonate and resonate with a potential resident resonate with a potential tourist or there's someone coming from the city, food is part of that. But not just food culture, you know, for restaurant dining, but also food culture as far as understanding where the food comes from and the, the education and the side, but from the presentation, from the chef's side, all the way to the presentation from, you know, the, the CSA, for example, the community supported agriculture and that movement to really start to understand where your food comes from and to do it at a community scale. But then also what are the attributes of, of harkening back to a land use in a community that is both agricultural based and, and has commercial activity as well. And that, as Tom was saying, with a lot of the surveys, broker surveys and so forth, what are, what are people interested in being near? Being near open space, being near trails, being, being in an environment that is potentially agricultural, though, you know, I know, we're not talking about large scale farming here. We're, we're talking about a small scale. So, you know, all of those combined, you know, really to kind of, you know, create this vision for Bellfield that comes out of really where, where you are, where Hyde Park is in the region and, and really where your visitors are coming from as well and what they're looking for.
Thank you. And I'm sure you're all grateful that I haven't quite gone through it all. So I'll have my questions the next time we see.
Ms. Denapoli, Mr. Oliver?
So I also have not had the ability to review this application in its entirety with its new submission, submittal, despite picking it up on the very day it was available. But I want to commend you and your team for what I consider to be, in my time here on the board, a, a record turnaround time for such a large submittal. And so far, it seems as if you've really paid a lot of attention to detail for our board's requests. And lastly, I just want to say that I look forward to a further review on this application and getting this project moving forward as soon as possible because I do believe and continue to believe it's going to be a staple for our town. And not only for our town, but the entire region. I think this is going to be something we've never seen in our area and will really put Hyde Park on the map in the entire Northeast for a really quality site. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Nice comment. Chris, Vice Chair Dexter?
Thank you, Chairman. I can't thank the team, the Bellfield team enough for listening to us all those hours that we spend dissecting through, you know, in some cases concerns, some cases it's just clarifications. You have done, I agree with my colleague, an astounding amount of work in a very short amount of time. My hat is off to you. That's, that is really moving the ball forward. I also have not had a chance to, to digest everything that you sent, but what I'm, what I'm starting to see is that where, you know, a, a further definition of your vision. Maybe it was just hard to kind of understand it at first, but what I'm starting to see here and, and and I think, Tom, your answer to the question about, you know, can the markets handle another hotel? We're trying to predict something now that will come to fruition in the next ten years, you know, overall. And it's very hard to say what's going to happen and we know that. So in my mind, what I'm really starting to understand is we are here to understand your vision as it is now. And as you go through the phases and you look to see, you know, how does this fit? Sometimes it'll be a great fit, but the further out we go, you may have to modify and you just, you'll come back and you'll say, okay, so instead of whatever, what, you know, however things change, because I can't even predict if it's going to be housing or tourism or, or agrihoods. But at this point, I have a much better feel that it's, it's kind of come to Bellfield and get a taste of what the Hudson River Valley region has. And so it's everything from a winery to a brewery to music, outdoors. You know, those boutique shops that, that specialize in, I don't know, some really cool foods and stuff. There's so many things. There's so many things. But I'm really starting to get it. I, you know, and I, I can understand that when we sketch out like the terrace or the, the ridge or these other places for, for families to live, that when we get there, we'll, you know, we're trying to define now the maximum, like what, what can the site actually hold? When we actually get there, it may be, maybe less than that, but we're trying to determine the maximum amount that can handle, that this site can handle, that the roadways can handle, that the surrounding areas can handle. And I really feel that I'm seeing that this can fit this site. And so again, I just want to thank your team for, there's so many things to be looked at. And again, and our team, I want to thank you guys because we're all trying to just digest all of this stuff, but I really do have a much better feel for this and I'm really starting to see how it fits really well within this area. So thank you.
Good. Thank you, Ed.
Thank you. Should have hired that girl to help market. Next, Ms. Wasser, comments?
Uh, yes. So I want to also reiterate my appreciation for all of the effort that's gone in, out, gone in, in your side. For the quick turnaround changes, particularly the parking and some of the more technical aspects of the proposal. I think the sidewalk will be very helpful and edifying for us to understand, you know, view corridors and view sheds and what we, what might fit and what might not fit. I will say that I still am struggling with bulk and density, especially in the village. So, you know, I was just in Montgomery, Alabama and visited a PUD called Hampstead. And their rentals, which are quite dense, had articulation every fifty feet. You know, they had different roof looks. And I was very impressed with it. And I thought, okay, so I get the density of Bella Field. I just wish it looked a little more like this. You know, what I was looking at there. So I'd love for you to just go online and look at some of the architectural design for their densest aspects.
What's the name?
Hampstead. Hampstead. In Montgomery, Alabama. Nothing like going down there to visit family and start thinking about your planning board projects. But that's my, it's always been my world. So it's okay.
I don't find that out at all. Sorry. But then again.
What I do. And, and I'm not saying to replicate it, but I did, it really was hitting me. I said, I understand why they want to do it at Bella Field, you know, I get it. I get, I get the density, but the density combined with your current bulk, with your current architecture, especially in the village on those larger buildings. I can't quite, I can't quite get there yet on that aspect of it.
Thank you. Mr. Pickett, and I wasn't going to necessarily say this at this meeting, but I think I should because it may affect our sidewalk. So Brent has submitted his resignation. His last day will be, his last meeting will be October twentieth. We'll be making more fanfare for you at the next meeting, Brent. But in the meantime, I just want to say that one of our planning board alternates, Rob Waters, has stepped up to become a permanent member. The town board has taken action. His first day will be officially November first. So I'd like to be able to invite him as well to the sidewalk because I think since he'll be taking over from Brent and Brent and he will be meeting to transition, I think it'd be important for him to be there as well. That noted, Mr. Pickett, comments?
Yes, thank you. I want to second the other members' inputs. One of the things I consider, I think, an ongoing priority is to understand the timing of the build out for the planning and scheduling of the city support services, because this is going to be done over a period of time. And how do we schedule what needs to be done to support what you're doing? what needs to be done to support what you're doing? Uh in a quick review, uh I'm not opposed to uh reducing the 150-foot setback from Route 9. I saw that from the original layouts. And I think the sidewalk will help in understanding that. And then lastly, I uh look forward to the hotel going vertical pretty soon.
Thank you, Brent.
Thank you.
Ms. Weiser?
Thank you, Brett.
So uh I echo my colleague's sentiments. I really appreciate all the hard work you guys have done. Um and then like Stephanie, in the short amount of time I've had to look at this, I still can't quite wrap my head around some of the the height of the buildings as well as the as well as the the length. Um so you know, maybe it's a matter of just me understanding or you clarifying, which is something I hope we'll be able to do sometime. So for example, when we look at the mixed-use loft buildings and we start off with a 20-foot, you know, 20-foot ceilings here. And then for the parapetted version, we have another 31 feet to go. For the shaped roof dwelling, we have another 39 feet. So if the ceiling height for the second and third floor apartments is 10 feet and assuming two feet for the mechanicals for each floor, that gets us to 44. 20 plus 24. So how in regarding the parapetted version, how is the remaining seven feet being utilized? And in the shaped roof building, how is remaining 15 feet being utilized? That kind of feels like it's going to be a fourth floor. Um and same questions apply to the third three-story multifamily housing. I just simply want to know what precisely constitutes a story and what becomes, and I want to know how all the height is being accounted for. Um regarding length, I believe uh I was asked to refer to page 11 in the Architectural Character section. Proposed building lengths range from 80 to 300 feet to create the scale and sense of place that reach a goal to to a successful village core. This justification is unchanged from the previous submission, and I still fail to understand how a 300-foot long building, even with articulation, hello, ready, my dog, can provide a sense of place. You know, it's possible that you've addressed these issues somewhere else in the document. If so, just please like point me to the section in the pages. So yes, even with 100-foot articulation, I still think that 300 feet is massive. Um and I don't get a sense of place of that. That's it. Thank you. Michael, you're muted.
Yep. Thank you, Ms. Weiser. Um I don't have a lot of other comments. I think what I want to, I'll just echo what my colleagues have said as well, that um the hard work really shows off. And I appreciate that it wasn't just um three of us meeting offline. I want to make sure the public understands that these meetings were not secretive or anything else. The consultants, who were all there um and no decisions are made. It's just we were trying to clarify things and those were memorialized by me and passed on to my colleagues each time we had meetings. They weren't official minutes, but they were uh sort of what I took away from them. So our colleagues could stay uh involved as well in this. But most of it was clarification. Uh as I said, the good example was the food manufacturing. On the website, it said that you might have up to 100,000 square feet uh for food manufacturing. But then, as you confirmed, uh Mr. Boudreaux did earlier, it was also done then, that this is actually still retail. It's demonstration. You can see how the cider is made. You can see how the beer is made, how the wine is made. So it's very much akin to a tourism experience that you can also consume as well as watch and, as Nicole said, learn to see the educational aspect of it. I think that the sidewalk is probably going to be one more thing that will help us particularly in looking at the 150-foot buffer. I do want to just weigh in because we have two goals here for the board. One, of course, is we need to make make a recommendation to the town board on the overall concept plan. Now that we have more refinements and we'll have more time to review before the next meeting, I want you to start thinking about what are our both broad brushstrokes, I'll call them, meaning do we like the amount of density? Do we think it's still too much? You know, those kinds of things. And then in the concept plan, we might also take a look at what the uses are proposed, the layout, et cetera. Um judging from remarks given tonight and over time, uh I think that overall the board, I just like the town board, planning board, just like the town board um likes the idea of the project and its conceptual layout um as well as what's intended in terms of uses. Um but there's still some things to get through. The second goal we have to get through is also seeker. Um and I will defer to uh Victoria and to Jennifer. Um it seems to me that it would make no sense to make a recommendation to the town board in the concept plan unless we conclude seeker. Uh so in that light, I, there was a requirement, I believe, in the last concept plan for, I don't remember the number of uses, but there were 23 townhomes that were required to be affordable. And by that definition for affordable would be a certain percentage of the Dutchess County median income. We still have not addressed that, and I just want to make sure that we do one way or another because we're going to get, we're not only going to require it. And it's part of seeker that we need to address that as some sort of finding. I believe this was related to community character last time. I will note that, once again, Hyde Park is not a town of lots and lots. It's not Greenwich, Connecticut, let's put it that way. You know, it's your typical upstate town where there's um a healthy mix of middle class, um working class, some upper class, I'll call them, or upper income. Um but you know, you you have a sort of a nice variety here in Hyde Park. And I think that one goal that we should always remember is to keep the residential portion kind of fitting in with the character of the community as it exists now. That doesn't mean that it can't, can and shouldn't change, that we shouldn't see improvements. I'm just wanting to bring that up. Um because the last thing I want to do would be to have a lawsuit that we might lose because we ignored something. The other issue that we still haven't resolved, but we can with DOT, again, if it's a seeker issue, would be that that hard right turn uh that was proposed with the landscaped island uh at the intersection of St. Andrews and 9G, I mean Route 9. Um the applicants are arguing that it's not really necessary, and it may be, but um that'll be something we bring up with DOT. Uh for the rest, like I said, that's that's where I'm going, is trying to figure out what I want to bring to the table in terms of my own comments. Because recall that when we make our uh recommendation to the town board, it won't be, well, Michael said this, and Anne said this, and Stephanie said this, et cetera. It will be a uniform. So if there are four people, say, who uh say, well, I want the affordable housing, then that suggest, that will recommendation will go in there. If there are four people who say, I think it's too dense, we should have lower percentages, that will go in there. In other words, minority input in these is valuable, but it's not going to be uh broken out separately. And note that the town board can also ignore our recommendation, although I think it does require a super majority of them, four versus just three. Um and I don't think that they'd ignore it anyway. They're looking for our input to help guide them, which is why hearing positive comments tonight makes me more comfortable with where we're going in terms of getting to that recommendation. And for a lot of the other seeker issues, it's part of this will also depend on, as Bonnie brought up brought up earlier, the endangered, threatened and rare species, specifically the Blanning's turtle. They'll be reviewed by DEC and also DOT and DCDPW or Department of Transportation, sorry, and Dutchess County Department of Public Works. Um they're going to have says also in the traffic impact analysis, et cetera. The good news is, is that we made a lot of progress in those three weeks. Uh a lot. And I know that it was a burden financially to have everybody there present all the time, but I think that it will pay off in the long run. And that's why we are also appreciative of you noting your hard work. So um do you guys want to schedule this for October 20th? I mean, I think we should wait, do the meeting on the 20th and maybe put this back on for the November the 3rd meeting to discuss. But that means that we, that's a long time in which to continue to review this application. If you guys want me to put it on October 20th to discuss for this, guys, after we've had a chance to review this big submission, then that's okay, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I interrupt for a second? If October 20th is our sidewalk day, so we would do the sidewalk and then
Yes.
Meet that night?
Yes. That's, that's uh, that's the plan.
Okay.
Then we'll schedule you for another workshop meeting on the 20th? And see you uh assumably on the 20th. You'll just, you'll give some details, Larry?
I'm going to um circ- circulate an agenda, give you a meeting spot, you know, where everybody can come in and park, and we'll staging area, and then we'll go from there. I'll have a map for everybody that you can take with you, mark up, that kind of thing.
I forgot to add, but I agree with Bonnie's suggestions that it would be nice if you staked out the, we'll call the ridge area, but it's basically the two ridges in the terrace as well as the location of the upper hotel.
Um, yeah, will do.
And that's it for tonight for this portion of the meeting. We'll, yes.
Michael, I just want to say, I just want to say on behalf of the town board that we really appreciate the the seriousness that the planning board is taking this project and also want to thank the Bellfield people for getting back to you with all of your, with as many answers as possible to all of your questions. It's just, it's it's a a process and the process is ongoing, and I'm just glad to see the progress. So uh we thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Um I do want to also just underscore that what I believe Mr. Oliver said is correct. This is a very in fact impactful project, as Nicole noted, too. And maybe it will become a sort of prototype for other sustainable neighborhoods. Um we can only hope. But that's why we need to take, be as careful as we can here, because what we're planning for, even though, as Anne said, it's going to be into the future, there may be changes modifying this later on based on new trends, new uh marketing factors, new economies, who knows what? We're going through a very precipitous time of change right now. But uh all we can do is do what we have right now, and you guys have done a great job of clarifying so many things that we didn't understand before that I think from now on, this will be moving much more quickly. Any comments from you guys? Jennifer, Tom? Mary?
Well, thank, thank you for your time, obviously, and and great comments, and I appreciate the the tone and and everyone working together to get this done. Time, as I mentioned, is is something we're very carefully monitoring. So that's obviously our biggest thing.
Time is the enemy of all developments. Believe me, we know. So thank you, guys. Have a great night, and we'll see you during the day on the 20th at noon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Buddy.
Good night, everybody.
Bye.
And the next application is key construction, uh office and storage units. I'm recused from this, which means that Tori Kane, if someone can I'll actually uh text her. I'll turn this over to Vice Chair Dexter, and if someone can just text me, I'm going to leave my entire room. So if someone texts me when I'm when I'm back on, then I'll stop, pop back up. Okay?
I'll I'll let you know, Michael.
Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Thank you, Michael. So next item on the agenda is key construction. Uh Kelly, I see you there. I know Amy's there somewhere.
Yes, we're here. Thank you. Um I know that the board has a very, very um full agenda tonight, so I'm going to ask um the board how you'd like us to proceed. And I can kind of start with just saying that we have given you a fairly substantial submission. Um we did complete an unofficial sidewalk, so we did um address some concerns or were aware of some of the concerns that the board had raised. We did receive the comment letters from Clark Patterson Lee and from um Bonnie and are prepared to address some of those comments in the subsequent submission. Um we were hoping tonight, simply to schedule the public hearing for this project and to refer the project to the county. Um I think we have to do the 2:39. I I think we have to do that. Um and I I'm just trying to be brief because I know that you have an extensive uh submission tonight, and I think our next real significant discussion is after we've received uh some feedback from DEC and from uh New York State DOT. So I'm happy to go over, I have a presentation prepared. I'm happy to go over that with you and with the board. Um but I understand that, you know, you do have a very long agenda, so I'll leave it up to you to decide how you want me to proceed.
Well, I appreciate that. Um but we don't want to shortchange you because this is uh it's kind of a critical por- portion of the um application.
Um.
I wanted to just, the first thing I wanted to um address was I believe that when we circulated, we we may have already sent this off to county planning.
Okay.
Need to go to county planning.
Okay, good. Very good.
So that was already done.
Wonderful.
And we we have gotten responses back um from couple of, I don't have my other notes in front of me. Um but there, so everything is now circulating right now. And I know that we discussed uh that you're going to be uh coordinating with the fire department on on any of their access concerns.
Correct. So we did submit everything to um the fire department formally. We did receive some preliminary comments back from the fire department. Um and we also submitted the entire submission um or the relevant sections of the submission that New York State DOT requires um to New York State DOT. We haven't received any comment back from them yet, which is understandable. You know, it will take them some time to come on the top of the pile and for them to get back to us. Um but the fire department has commented, I don't know if they're on tonight or not, but we did just receive some preliminary comments that they were questioning about the spacing of the building, um whether or not there was an exterior accessway and how they would access the building. So we continue to coordinate with them, and I expect that they'll provide you with a review letter when they're done. We also, just while I'm on the what we've done since the last time we were before you, we also um did complete the field inspection with New York State DEC to confirm the wetland boundary. There was one very minor change um in the back of the site, which I would call de minimis. It was just a connection of two flags um that drawing the uh New York State DEC wetland map has been um finalized by the surveyor and sent to New York State DEC for their validation. Um we also are in the process of putting together the permanent application to DEC for what I would call the nominal impacts to the wetland buffer. Um essentially where the existing driveway is located, there's a minor expansion that we have to make to improve the driveway so it meets uh certain specs. And um we're going to prepare that application to DEC, which will trigger some responses back that um Bonnie's office was looking for. Um in addition, we did identify that there were three all-call specimen trees um that were identified on the driveway. We've marked those in the fields and the surveyor has picked those trees up, so the next submission that you'll see will have those three. I think they were cottonwoods. Ted can confirm if I'm correct or not. Um cottonwoods that are going to be located on the plan, so the next submission, just the timing didn't work on getting them on this submission, the next submission, those trees will be identified.
Excellent.
And we did, you know, we did provide you with a fairly lengthy um submission. Again, I can go through all of those items. You know, it's a full submission set, responses to the comments from the last um planning board meeting. And um you know, some modifications to the site based on the comments that we have received from Pizza Terrace Office as well.
And you said you're you're preparing a response letter to the CPL.
Correct. Yeah, I think we've kind of narrowed down. We're to the point where we're sort of catching up and really narrowing down on the issues. Um you know, we were hoping that we can schedule the public hearing and then perhaps at that schedule, you know, that public hearing, if we've addressed all those secret items, we might be able to address that at that time. And then, you know, I'm hoping at that point we've narrowed down. It seems as if the big remaining items are just response back from New York State DC and New York State DOT. I don't mean to minimize some of the comments that we've received from the consultants, but those seem to be the the larger of the comments that we've received back, and they're echoed responses.
Yep, that that sounds, that sounds correct. And as we've discussed before, there's there's, you know, always the concern about the response times from those agencies.
Correct. That's what we're worried about. Yeah. So it just, it seems as if if we were able to schedule the public hearing, we might be able to then solicit some of the comments from the public and kind of wrap all of those comments into one response letter to get back to the town. So hopefully at that point, we're complete and have addressed all those comments.
Right. Well, we are, we are um looking to schedule the public hearing for that for that first uh meeting in November.
Okay. Okay. And that's. Again, you know, I'm happy to give you a presentation. It just, I think a lot of the changes, um you know, we've had some interim discussions with the consultants and the board, and so I think the next submission will will be able to address much of those comments, again, with those agencies and then the public's comments as well.
Okay. Um well, why don't we get some input from the uh consultants and uh we'll start with uh Bonnie? You were out on the state visit with us?
Yes, yes. Heard snuff snuff of bears. So um so uh really, I think, Kelly, you you um hit the nail on the head. You know, most of our comments or the substantive ones really deal with agency feedback. Um you know, whether it's the fire department, DOT, or DEC, a lot of our substantive comments revolve around their input and and again, the responses. I think much of the other comments in my memo are related to cleanup items, further clarification, adding notes. Uh but I again, I think substantively, we need to hear back from those agencies to then see how, if at all, it may affect um your layout and and go from there. And so that that's really it in a nutshell. I don't think we have to go into all the detailed comments. Uh you know, but I really do concur with where we are in the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Okay?
Sure. Uh yeah, same thing here as far as the agencies go. Uh so they're um you know, working, working with them before we before we get around to a secret determination. You know, we'll need some feedback from them to make sure that everything on the plan is still okay. Um we didn't get a chance to look at, you know, the SWIP yet. Um we have, like a lot of them in, you know, the We didn't get a chance to look at, you know, the SWIP yet. We have, like, a lot of them in, you know, the queue, so we're going to get somebody to look at that. Kelly, one question I had, there was on the access road coming in, there's an existing driveway that goes off, you know, the parcel. So I assume that that goes to a house or something?
Sure. Let me just, I'll show this to you real quick. Let me just go to the survey. So on the survey, so on the drawing that you're seeing here, this is Route 9, and right here is the driveway entrance. So I think you're talking about this driveway. So there's an existing easement, and there's a house that sits back there. It's, it's sort of an odd configuration. I think that house was years and years and years ago part of this property proper. And so there is an existing easement for that house, and that existing easement will remain. There is another un, sort of, non-proper, I guess, driveway access to another property that's located on the right, if you're coming in, and I think some of the members and consultants that went to the workshop saw that. We don't anticipate continuing that entrance and that driveway entrance to that property, which is this property here. So there will be a fence or some sort of structure just to prohibit that access in the future. So the only access will be for the property and for the resident that's located here.
Okay. I don't know if Victoria would want to see any documentation on that, but I'll let her answer that.
Sure.
You know, the other things in our letter were just, you know, there's grading to look at around, you know, the buildings, and I can work with the LRC group on that. You know, the only other, well, not the only other thing. So I did have a comment on the access, access road. There's that portion of the road that gets very flat as you come, as you come down into where, you know, the wetlands are and the pocket, pocket ponds, right? So what I basically said is that, look, you know, it's an applicant, it's an applicant-like issue. It's not going to be a town roadway. You know, it could be, it could be more of a maintenance issue. So I offered a couple things there for LRC, like, to look at. And it's really going to be up to them to, like, decide whether they want to make any changes or not, because again, it's a private, you know, site. There's not like it's going to be a huge amount of public, like, trafficking here. It's going to be some contractors. So I just, like, bring it up, and if they want to look at it, fine. If not, you know, that's okay.
Okay.
The other thing that I thought about after I wrote the letter, is this project going to be phased as far as the storage buildings?
So that's an interesting question, and one that we often try to come up with at the end, and it's better to bring that up in the beginning. I would say possibly the most urgent matter is getting this office built. And so the clock is definitely ticking that, you know, we need to start thinking about how he can get into construction. Because he is, as everyone knows, I think, moving out of the city of Kipsey sooner than we think, and we have to have a place for him to go into Hyde Park. My guess is yes. The first part of it would be the office, and then the storage units would follow afterward. So if you think that it would be best to phase this on the plan and show that as, like,
Yeah, we should show that, right. And Ted, and Ted is nodding your head because, yes, we should show that. And it's probably better to even break it up if you think into, you know, three phases where if you build, if you build the office, you build, you know, the larger warehouses back by the office, and then the other ones come, like, later. This way it's easy, this way it's easy to break up, you know, the COs, and you don't get, like, hung up.
Perfect.
And then, you know, whether any of the, you know, erosion control plans or stormwater plans need to be, like, amended just to take into account the phasing. I don't think that they do really. But you just have to look at it. So that was something that I thought, that was something I thought about after I wrote the letter, but you can incorporate that in the next submission.
It's a good point. I think, well, just thinking out loud, is we'll probably do all of the infrastructure improvements in Phase 1, all of the stormwater and so forth, because we rough grade everything out.
Makes sense, yeah.
And then we can get the pads ready for the other two sites and then move forward and build them up.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay, that was it for us.
Good idea.
Thank you, Pete. Victoria?
Hi. I know we talked about this a little bit on the site walk, but the current accessway is partially located on someone else's property. And I know that you're going to clean that up, so we may just need, like, a temporary license or access easement for you to access their property to remove the curb cut and do whatever it is.
So everyone is where we're talking about this right area, this area right here. So, okay, understood.
I'm very familiar with it because I drove by it, like, six times, so.
As we all did, yes, okay.
So, yeah, just some kind of temporary authorization to do the work, but we can work on that after DOT reviews and approves and decides what the best layout is.
Good point, okay.
Other than that, I have no problem starting the public hearing, but again, with the understanding that it's not going to be resolved in one meeting. You know, sometimes it takes a long time to get responses from DOT and DEC.
Understood, yeah.
Thank you, Victoria. Anything, nothing else?
No.
Okay, then I'd like to get the board's feedback. So I'm going to start with Ann Wiser.
Well, thank you, Ann. I have nothing to add to this, so.
Well, thank you very much. Brent, you were out on the site walk.
Yeah, I think the important part is to get the DEC, the wetland validation, and then also the DOT inputs and requirements. We're going to need, once we've got those, you can pretty much start nailing things down and he'll finalize everything, so. I think everybody knows that's kind of key at the moment for timing.
Thank you.
Yeah, agreed. Stephanie?
Thanks, Ann. I don't actually have any additional comments at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Oliver?
I have no new comments, other than I do think this is a great location for that type of project, and I'm interested to hear what DEC and DOT have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Diane?
All I would like to say is I found the site visit very helpful. It's always good to go and see and be able to really visualize where everything is going in, in real life.
Great. Yep, thank you.
And Ms. Kane, Tori?
Yes, I'd like to just agree with Mr. Oliver that I'm looking forward to this project. I think it's a good location and a good addition to the town, but there's really not a lot more to discuss until we get responses from, from other agencies.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So Kelly, we've heard from everybody. I think, I think the only other thing that's kind of hanging out, but again, it is trying to calculate the total scale?
That was what I was going to ask you. Yes, that was my last thing on my list is Ted. Yep, whether or not Ted has concurred with our calculation or, or not, and whether or not she needs any additional information.
I believe we decided we were doing it the same way we did Hutchins', and I think that is how you calculated it, that the banked parking is included in the scale number so that if it's developed, it can be, if it's required, it can be developed. And I think that's what you put in your application.
Correct. Yeah, so just for everyone's memory, so the scale permitted is 40,000 square feet. The scale proposed, I'm going to be off on my numbers, it's 51,000 and change. So we will need a variance, an area variance from the town ZVA on the scale. So once the planning board completes seeker, we can then move forward to the ZVA and then back to the planning board, assuming that that variance is granted.
We did have a question that came up at the site walk. Kelly, could you just share your plan for a second?
Sure.
The way that we did Hutchins' was that the spaces that are being used for the temporary loading and unloading for the storage units, I believe, are not counted. But then you have a gravel area above the septic field?
There's a gravel area right here.
Right. So we weren't sure if that was going to be used for some kind of parking and whether those spaces should be delineated and counted or included in scale, or, you know, what, what was really proposed to happen there.
Okay, it's up to the board. It's our intention that that's really has a structure over top of it, so it has a roof. So we're showing it in this area where we could put potentially a vehicle or equipment that could be protected from snow and rain, particularly during the winter months. That could be stored there, but easily accessible. And so that was the intended use.
And what is the reason that it's gravel?
I don't, I, I can't answer that question. You stumped me on that one. I don't know. It may be because of the stormwater, the SWIP. It may have, you know, may have been required to be impervious. So I'm not 100% sure, but I can get an answer to that. If it is paved, you know, certainly we can include that if you think that needs to be included. I mean, I'd rather err on the side of caution. If we think that it needs to be included, we can include it when we apply to the ZBI.
Yeah, it's not the paving that I was concerned about. It was actually whether it's a parking space that you're just not marking as parking.
I mean, in theory, it would be parking because it would be a piece of equipment or a vehicle. So if we want to include it, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to make it look as if we're trying to kind of skirt an issue. It's certainly to park equipment or vehicles during the winter months, so that they're protected from the weather.
Okay, so Ted, if you could just think about that. Sorry.
Yeah, and so in our agenda, in our agenda meeting, Kelly, one of the concerns with that area was if it is for vehicle storage, then it probably shouldn't be gravel.
Agreed, yep, okay.
Just because for spills.
I recall that at the site walk. That was actually discussed, and I think you wanted it to be paved for that very reason.
Okay, understood. Then we can make that change. So we'll make the change, and then we'll also include it in the scale. So we'll get a, you know, minor adjustment to the scale when we resubmit.
That's great, because that way we can catch everything and
Correct.
Pick the max number, and that way you don't have to go back or recalculate later.
Agreed, yeah. We'll err on the side of caution. Okay.
All right, I'm just looking through, and I don't see any other, we've addressed everything that I had in my notes, and so, yeah, we'll get the DEC responses and DOT responses. And I know we're looking to set a public hearing for this application for our November 3rd meeting, so if someone, if we could get a motion for that?
So moved.
Thank you, Tori. And second?
Stephanie Wasser.
Excellent. Okay, so we will add you as a public hearing to November 3rd.
Very well.
And we're hoping we get some excellent neighbor input, and maybe by then we will have heard from the DEC and DOT.
Do we all need to vote on that?
Oh, sorry.
It's our primary hearing.
Yes, we're setting the public hearing November 3rd. Please, everybody, raise your hand and say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. We'll look forward to it.
Yep. Do you anticipate going to the zoning board this month?
I would like to get into the zoning board. That's why I was trying to get that calculation narrowed down. I don't know if I need a referral over to the board from the planning board. If I need a referral to the zoning board, then, okay, so we can go ahead and apply. So we'll make that change to the scale. We'll add that parking area, and we'll apply with that included. Okay, all right, very good.
Yeah, definitely start that process.
Very good. Okay, thank you very much, everyone. And I just want to say, not a special, but a special thanks to Brent. I didn't know that this was his last night. We've worked together for many years, so it's always sad when we see people going off in different directions. So I just want to thank him for all of the contributions he's made to the many, many meetings I've been to before the board. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Have a good night, everyone.
You too.
Okay, bye bye.
All right, someone can text the chair to return? That'd be great. What's our next item? Let's see.
Mr. Holt?
We're up to the Holt property lot line alteration. Thank you for your patience.
Learned a lot about Hyde Park on this call tonight.
Yes. And I see he's here, and Mr. Holt is here.
Hello?
Yep, hi, Mr. Holt?
Hello, Courtney Martin here.
Thank you.
Just waiting on the return. There he is.
There he is.
Thank you so much for handling that, Ann.
No worries.
So, yes, Holt property lot line alteration is the next workshop, workshop item. We had a revised submission, and we also have had, as I referred to earlier, Mr. Martin sent us both a copy of what I'll call a loose agreement made by the County House of Representatives, as well as the St. Andrews access points. Let me turn it over to you, Mr. Martin.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. Well, at our last meeting, which was many months ago, there were a few, there were a few concerns or questions that the board had. And one was that the application needed to be signed by all the applicants, which it wasn't at that time. That has been taken care of. I think the board has suggested a little cleanup on the mapping. I think there was a little confusion on just exactly what we were doing. I believe we've taken care of that. And also, probably more recently, there's been some discussion about about having access onto St. Andrews Road. And I know there was multiple emails that went back and forth, and we had discussions. Mr. Holt had discussions with the county, Bob Balkin, and I followed up with Mr. Balkin and also Bill Trifolo. And because, the whole reason for that is, as you may remember, we have three separate parcels here. There's like a 16-acre parcel, there's a five-acre parcel, and then there's a little triangular parcel. It's barely a quarter of an acre. And we're showing that. In a perfect world, we'd like to merge that with this and make it one big piece, but I think if the board remembers, we have some tax issues we have to deal with, and I like, I'm hopeful that'll be resolved ultimately, but in the meantime, we want to leave it the way it is. So the question is, well, are we creating a landlord parcel? And to that end, based on our discussions with the Public Works, Dutchess County Public Works, and then the information we received from them, even though this was a limited access highway, there was about three or four places on that road where access could be obtained, and this was done by legislative action by the legislature back in 19, in the late 60s, or maybe it was 1970. So we've confirmed that this is one of the parcels that, that there can be access. So we believe we've addressed that issue, and I think, I think we have clarity now which direction we'd like to go.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Ms. Paladaro?
I was just going to ask if you've added the location of that access to the map, because we looked at the DCDPW resolution and plans, but they were at a different scale, and it was sort of hard to identify exactly where that access was going to be.
I can show that on a future, you know, submittal, but I can tell you, if you're looking at the plan on the St. Andrews Road there, you see there's a, there's a, there's a pond that then it, there's an outlet that goes under that roadway. And that access point would be right in that area. It would be just to the east of that culvert.
Thank you. So what I was going to say was, this, we of course want to be helpful in this application. While it sometimes looks confusing to try to figure everything out because there's a lot going on on one page, it's not all that complicated, so I think it's going to be more technical review by Peter, Bonnie, and Victoria. So let me start with them. Massachusetts Taro comments?
All right, no, none, like, at this time. We'll have to just, you know, review the map, and I know we had a meeting, you know, a week ago, and now we've got some clarification on the lot line, so we'll look at it.
Thank you. Ms. Franson?
This is one that Pete and Victoria are reviewing.
That's right. Never mind. You're right. Sorry, my fault. My bad. It didn't sound like we needed a planner on this one. Thank you. Ms. Paladaro, additional comments or questions?
Well, I know that we had asked for some clarification. We're going to have technical comments because some of the lines on the map are still a little confusing, and I know that you're doing a lot of things on one map, so it's hard to be completely clear. So we will be providing comments on that. The other issue is that if you do think that you will be adding, I guess, your mother's parcel to the mix at some point. um, I guess your mother's parcel to the mix at some point, you know, do you want to wait until you have certainty there? Because if you add it later on, it's gonna require another public hearing and us to redo some of these procedures. So from a cost perspective, um, you know, if you're gonna add it, add it now. Also, uh, we do have all those materials from DCDPW. Uh, the board should decide, uh, whether, how far we want them to go with getting approval for an actual access at this time. Or whether, whether noting that there's likely access is sufficient.
I think we would normally require conceptual approvals, or, you know, just conceptual. That way we know that we're not creating a landlocked lot at this point. And I believe, um, so let me just go backwards on what you first started with, with the lines in the map being somewhat confusing.
Um, yeah.
Ernie, is there a way you could color code what exists and what's proposed? Just change the colors? Because the, the thickness of the lines, I can't tell the difference myself. I, I thought, I worked through it to figure it out, but it was still, because it's just one sheet, there's a lot going on on it. And Pete, don't you think?
I mean, we can, we can do that, but I mean, the, the light lines are essentially being eliminated, the dark lines are the new lines. And, uh, and just to qualify, I think what, um, Victoria said, you mentioned, uh, uh, Mr. Holt's mother's parcel. We're talking about that little quarter acre triangle. That, that's the, that's the one in ish, the, the, that's the, uh, the, the parcel in question.
Right.
And, uh, I don't know whether, whether Mr. Holt wants to weigh in on, on that at all, as far as where we're trying to go.
Well, Ernie, I think you can speak for me about that.
Okay. You know, that parcel, that triangle parcel has been taxed like a, like a single family lot, but yet you wouldn't be able to build anything on that. I don't even think you put a doghouse on that property. So that, that's triangle parcel right there. And, um, it has its own tax grid number, it gets its own tax bill. And it's been, it's been taxed at something like fifteen hundred to two thousand a year, so right now there's like eight thousand dollars in taxes on it. What Mr. Holt is hoping to do is go to the auction and buy it back at some reduced amount. I mean, that's one option. The other option is he could pay the eight or nine thousand dollars and continue on with this application. Right now, he's elected to, you know, let it go and hopefully go to the auction and obtain it.
Right, I mean, at, his business decision is not within the planning board's purview. We're just recommending that if he wants to include it, maybe he hold off on this current application, so we don't have to do it twice.
He, he and I have talked about that and, um, his decision, um, even as most recently as a, as a week ago, was still to go forward. Is that correct, Floyd?
Yeah, um, yes, it is. Um, there are many mitigating circumstances, but we also, uh, know that, um, the, the property won't be landlocked, uh, you know, especially with the resolutions from the county, uh, and the access on the St. Andrews Road. Ernie, if I'm correct?
That's correct, yes.
The, the last thing, um, are septics and wells. Uh, before you start redrawing the landlines, I, I think you really need to identify, um, where all the septics are, just so we make sure they stay on the same lots.
We, we can do that as maybe as just for, for a map of information, but as you probably know, Victoria, this is gonna be a permission to file with the county. And typically, they do not allow us to, uh, designate septics and wells on the property because someone may read into that as some sort of an approval. So typically, when it comes to permission to file, we do not show that.
Uh, he's, yeah, that's, uh, that's, uh, you know, correct, um, Ernie. Maybe what we could do is just get like a worksheet for, you know, the file that wouldn't be part of what gets filed in the clerk's office that at least shows like approximate areas, so that, you know, we know that the lot lines aren't gonna have any effect on any septics.
Yeah, we need to make sure the wells and the septics are remaining with the principal house that they.
Right, and the wells too, yeah.
Maybe I, I can do that as just a side map, I can.
Yeah, it's just a worksheet for the file.
Something that you just have it in the file.
That's correct, yep.
Okay, we can do that.
Yep.
Anything else?
Would, would you consider, uh, scheduling a public hearing?
Well, we haven't, uh, does this get circulated to anyone?
Um, well, we are going to circulate to the Department of Public Works. It is an unlisted action. We're gonna circulate to Department of Public Works, um. I don't know if there are any other agencies that we wanna send to.
So, well, this, that, that reminds me then, so I, I had a question. Similarly to what we did for Mr. Andros's parcel, doesn't the new lot need to show? I guess it already has a use on it, so that, that wouldn't be the same thing, so it's okay.
Well, I mean, this big lot, I guess we're gonna assume has a residential use. The, the, the problem with the lot, um, on that other subdivision was that we weren't sure there was gonna be room for a septic. Here, you know, there's a lot of.
We can assume that there's, there's some sort of septic capacity someplace, I take it?
I, I'll leave that to Pete, but there's a lot of acres.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's big.
It's a large parcel, I mean, you know, even for a single house.
Right. Then thank you. Ms. Moss, any comments? None? That, so before we set a public hearing, we'll need to actually type the action, which I don't think we've done, and then circulate to DCDPW. Um, and maybe to the legislature as a courtesy?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, then let me start from my metaphorical, I'll call it this time, left, Ms. Weiser, comments?
I have nothing to add at this time, thanks.
Mr. Pickett?
No comment.
Thank you. Ms. Wasser?
No comment.
Vice Chair Dexter?
Nothing additional.
Mr. Oliver?
No new comments.
And Ms. DiNapoli?
I concur, um, with Mr. Dupree's request that, that the next map be color coded. It would just make our lives, I think, a lot easier, if that's possible. Otherwise, no other comments, thank you.
And not, not, not new plans, Ernie, just to send us a digital with the lines in different colors, that's all I need. So no reprinting, in other words, no extra cost on that end to, uh, Mr. Holt. So everyone having no comments, I don't really have a lot of comments either, like I said, this doesn't seem complicated, so let's schedule this for the October twentieth meeting, we can type the action and circulate, or refer, circulate, sorry. And do we wanna consider accepting for sketch at the same time? They, they made it abundantly clear that they don't wanna include that triangular parcel, so I think, I, I don't think a lot of things are otherwise going to change.
Yes, I think that would be good.
Okay.
And the other, the other thing that, um, we should talk about is at the allocation of average density to the lots for the next, um, submission. The chart is there, but it's blank.
I'm sorry, Victoria, what did you say?
So the town has an average density here, a maximum average density of two dwelling units per acre.
Right.
And as you move the lot lines around, you're changing the acreage, and so you can, you have the ability to move the density between the lots. So we just need you to identify whether the density is gonna stay with the lots, or whether you're moving or transferring density to the new large parcel.
Because it's average density, when you make the subdivision, you could theoretically wind up with more units, dwelling units on one parcel than the other, as long as the ultimate average is two per acre on the parent parcel. So this would give you the ability to perhaps transfer more density to the sixteen acres, if that would be desirable. I'm not sure. Um, I mean, the more acreage, the more density you get per acre on a large site like that, the more you probably need central water and, uh, you know, central sewer, even though that's not a requirement for anything below fifty homes. But just the nature of the land, there's wetlands there, et cetera, so it's just, it's just something for you and, uh, Mr. Holt to consider to find out what you wanna do. With the same thing happened with Mr. Andros. Um, as he re-subdivided, we said, you need to reassign your density, because he's in the landings, which has the most density of any district in the town. Now, without sewer, he can't build any more houses than what he's got. But in the event that someday there's an inexpensive sewage treatment pla- sewage treatment package plant he could put down on the river someplace and get permission, he could then build, so that's, that would be the only thing holding him back, because we have town water down, uh, by the train station where he lives. So it's just a matter of you calculating where you think more density should go. It's permitted.
So update that chart, it's basically, uh, just complete the chart, I should say.
Yes, complete the chart. The other thing that should be on the chart is the lot area of each of the lots as it exists and as it's proposed.
It has to be in the chart, even though it's on the side?
It's, I mean, it's easier for me to look at the chart to determine compliance, it's, it just makes it easier, yeah.
Okay.
Scott, I'm keeping notes for Cynthia. Anything else that we can think of on this application before the twentieth? Okay, then, uh, we'll see you in two weeks. Like I said, we'll have a resolution ready to type the action, circulate, uh, to DCDPW, anybody else I can think of, and accept for sketch. Now we'll get this process going.
Okay, so the, the, did you say the twentieth, Michael?
Yes.
Okay. All right, very good.
As I said, in the interim, I don't think anybody else needs to see the colored lines, but if you can just annotate like Victoria did with the pink line or something to show us, posed, existing and proposed.
Okay.
That would make it easier. Otherwise, I thank you for your patience, as Vice Chair Dexter did, because I know you sat through a lot, a very quick portion of this meeting, so. But then again, they're your neighbors, Floyd. They'll be your neighbors, the, the, that project, so it's always good for you to know what's going on nearby. That's right. Well, I would like to thank the members of the, the board and also, uh, Ernie Martin, uh, and the other people that work with me. Uh, because we can never do it alone, we've got, all got busy lives, and I see that schedule you had, I don't know how you do that and get through those types of agendas, but, uh, but you're doing it, so good for you. Thank you very much, it means a lot to hear that from a longtime resident. You guys have a good night, and we'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a resolution to approve sixty-four Falkil Road. If we recall, we've already approved the two lot subdivision, this is to approve the site plan that's required for the two single family residences that will be on the lot. Note that one single family residence is actually going to become a guest quarters, but the family will be living in it while the first one is constructed. I believe this resolution is going to be introduced by our vice chair.
Sorry about that, all right. Resolution to grant site plan approvals, sixty-four Falkil Road, Lot One B, October sixth, twenty twenty-one, Resolution Number twenty twenty-one dash zero eight B. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby approves the site plan set and authorizes the chair or is authorized designate to sign the site plan set after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow, including the recreation fee for one new lot. Two, filing of the subdivision plot with the Dutchess County Clerk. Three, approval for the methods of water supply and wastewater disposal from Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health. Four, proof of recordation of the approved shared driveway easement agreement. Five, proof of recordation of the approved open space deed restriction. Six, proof of record or recordation of the approved easement for the dry hydrant on lands of tyranny. Seven, revision of the site plan set as follows. A, amend the phasing notes on the cover sheet to correct the pond A and pond B designations. B, amend the phase three notes to indicate that the dry hydrant will be installed in pond B. C, include a reference to the approved SWIP and date for additional requirements for maintenance and reporting in sections nine point five and nine point five point one on sheet SY eight. D, amend all sheets to label the stormwater practices that correspond with the phasing notes on the cover sheet. Be it further resolved that prior to the zoning administrator authorizing issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall provide the planning board with a PDF of the fully signed site plan set and subdivision plan. So have a second?
Second, Chris Oliver.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 No motions or abstentions, the motion carries unanimously, congratulations. I do wanna point out that I think most of the items in condition seven, uh, Mr. Scott is here, have already been taken care of. But I left those in there because I didn't think that, um, Mr. Sotera would have time to review and say, just knock them off, it just seemed easier to leave them on, so Peter, I know you took, you went at them immediately, so, but we'll just, when you get through the, when you do the notebook, just say they've already been, you know, met, that's all.
Uh, if I have one quick question for you, you couldn't figure out the approved SWIP date, we looked through our files and we didn't get a, uh, a, uh, stormwater management SWIP approval memo of any kind with an approval date on it.
Um, I'll figure something out for that, Peter, I'll just go back and look through, uh, you know, the calendar as to see, um, uh, when we, when we completed, you know, the review, so I'll send, I'll just send a quick, like, memo on that.
That'd be great.
Give you, you know, the date.
Yes, thank you very much.
No problem.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, everyone.
Good luck with the next steps ahead, construction, et cetera. Take care, nice working with you, nice working with you. The next item is the exterior modification for the wastewater treatment facility at the Saki Brewery. A reminder, the applicant's also requested a, that we approve a change in the, uh, plan sign. The sign is still code compliant, and the resolution that we have prepared does, uh, indeed address both the sign and the exterior. And Ms. Roberts is here, welcome back, been a while.
Evening Chairman Dupree, thanks for having me.
Of course, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, nothing to add, I reviewed the draft resolution this afternoon and the team also reviewed and, and we're all good with everything, so, thank you for your time.
You're welcome, and by the way, you look like you're in a happier place than the last time I saw you, where you were in a smaller apartment.
More of a background.
Well, more space as well, so I believe this resolution is going to be introduced by Ms. Weiser?
Uh, yes, Reso- Resolution to grant amended site, site plan approval, Saki Brewery, October fourth, twenty twenty-one, Resolution Number twenty eighteen dash twenty-five J. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved, the planning board hereby approves the amended site planned and authorizes the chair or is authorized designate to sign the amended site planned after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Be it further resolved that the planning board recommends that the zoning administrator issue a signed permit, but the sign is shown on the amended site plan. Be it further resolved that the pri- that prior to the zoning administrator authorizing issuance of the site certificate of occupants, occupancy for the abandoned project. One, all disturbed areas shall be stabilized to the satisfaction of the town and Hyde Park Stormwater, Stormwater Management Officer. Two, the applicant shall provide the zoning administrator with the evidence of issuance of a state pollution discharge elimination system permit and protection of waters permit for the wastewater treatment facilities outfall into the tributary of the Marichi Kill. Three, the applicant shall provide the zoning administrator with the evidence, with evidence that the Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health has approved the new wastewater treatment facility and permit permits the continued use of the existing subsurface wastewater disposal system. Four, submission to the zoning administrator of, of an as-built plan which depicts all New York State Department of Transportation required elements for the project. Be it further resolved that the prior, that prior to the zoning administrator authorizing issuance of a building permit for any improvements shown in the amended site plan set, the applicant shall provide the planning board with a PDF of the fully signed site plan set.
Back in it, Brent Pickett? Thank you, any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously, Kate. Sorry, thank you for your patience, as well, I was trying to keep you here all, all tonight, so.
No problem, always, it's a pleasure to hear your board, uh, discuss applications, so, thanks. We'll play a evening freedom.
Thank you.
Aye.
It's been, by the way, I think it's been exciting for just our, all of our citizens. I hear it when I'm out in the grocery store, people saying, look, the Saki manufacturer is going up again. People got really excited, uh, I think people were very much afraid for a while that it wasn't going to happen. And interestingly, I've had people that I've, as I've been going door to door, uh, occasionally, I've had some people say, what color is that gonna be? Is it gonna be just that black color? I'm like, no, but that burnt color is significant in Japanese architecture, so I've explained it and then people go, oh, okay, get it, so. It's always important to get out to the community, in other words. Uh, the next item on the agenda is a site plan waiver for replacing windows at eleven Maple Lane. This is under Daniel Silverstein, and we have the recommendation, um, from the zoning administrator.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna be reading this one.
Yep.
Daniel Silverstein, eleven Maple Lane, site plan waiver, October sixth, twenty twenty-one, Resolution twenty twenty-one dash forty-six. Daniel Silverstein, 11 Maple Lane, Site Plan Waiver, October 6, 2021, Resolution 2021-46. Whereas, a request for site plan waiver has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Daniel Silverstein to replace 10 windows on the existing single family home with more energy efficient windows. And whereas, 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 therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives site plan requirements for the proposed changes as described in the request for a waiver of site plan received by the planning department on September 17, 2021.
Seconded, Diane Denapoli.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand, say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. The next item is also a site plan waiver recommendation from the zoning administrator. This is for a generator located at 17 Hudson Drive. This is in the historic overlay district because it joins an historic property, but it should not have any deleterious impacts on it as evidenced by our zoning administrator. And I believe Mr. Oliver will introduce this resolution.
Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, Site Plan Waiver, Resolution Number 2021-47. Whereas, an application requesting a waiver of site plan has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Mr. and Mrs. Alan Humphrey on September 21, 2021, for property located at 17 Hudson Drive in the Town of Hyde Park. Whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives site plan requirements for the proposed change as described in the building permit received by the building department on September 1, 2021, and per the request of the planning board dated September 21, 2021.
Seconded, Brent Pickett.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda is a very similar application. It's a site plan waiver request for a generator also located on Hudson Drive. This is 43. Dinner's with Michael and Dawn Englishby. And I do want to just say that I remember when I was in the Board of Visual Environment Committee that we gave this site a beautification award, I think for stone walls. They've done a really fabulous job and I happened to drive by the other day. The landscaping, everything looks really nice. These people very much keep their property up, looking fantastic. I believe this resolution is going to be introduced by Ms. Denapoli.
Town of Hyde Park Planning Board for standby generator, Resolution 2021-48. Whereas, five times, now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives site plan requirements for the proposed change as described in the building permit received by the building department on September 9, 2021, and per the request to the planning board dated September 18, 2021.
I second that. Ann Weiser?
Any discussion? They're being known. Please, everyone, raise your hand and say aye to vote yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The next item is also a site plan waiver. This is to approve a deck replacement and this is not in the overlay, historical overlay district. This is in the scenic area of statewide significance. But this is not visible from the river or the two historic sites at the moment. And this resolution will be introduced by Vice Chair Dexter.
Townified Park Planning Board, Gary and Kirsten Urins, 9 Mansion Drive, Site Plan Waiver, October 6, 2021, Resolution Number 2021-49. Whereas, a request for the site plan waiver has been made to the Townified Planning Board by Gary and Kirsten Urins for the existing 22 foot by 12 foot rear deck on his property located at 9 Mansion Drive. And whereas, 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 therefore be it resolved that the Townified Park Planning Board hereby waives site plan requirements for the proposed changes as described in the building permit received by the building department September 1, 2021, and per the request to the planning board dated September 27, 2021.
Seconded, Stephanie Wasser.
Any further discussion? They're being known. Please raise your hand and signify a yes by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda is another site plan waiver request for a deck replacement as well. This is on 11 River Road in Statsburg. This is in the historic overlay district, but it's just replacing a deck. So we have the recommendation from Ms. Moss and this is owned by Ariel and Tiffany Rodriguez. I believe Mr. Pickett is introducing this resolution.
I have it. Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, Ariel and Tiffany Rodriguez, 11 River Road. Site Plan Waiver, Resolution 2021-50. Whereas, a request for a site plan waiver has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Ariel and Tiffany Rodriguez for a new eight foot by 16 foot covered porch and a nine foot by 12 foot side deck for their single family home, requiring a building permit and yeah, where to go. Whereas, 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 whereas. Therefore be it resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waives the site plan requirements for the proposed changes as described in the building permit received by the building department July 15, 2021, and per the request to the planning board dated August 23, 2021.
Seconded that. Ann Weiser?
Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries unanimously once again. And by the way, Ms. Moss, you did Herculean work getting all those waivers processed. I know that that's not the easiest thing, but I also know that the residents who are doing these small jobs really depend on your efforts and patience to get these through to us, so thank you.
Ann Hampson, the secretary, is key in evaluating these and helping to prepare them, so it is.
And she, I think she writes the resolutions these days, so it's a tight team over there. You've got a lot on your plate. I'm so happy to see that Ann and Cynthia and Serena now all step up when they need to, so. I just want to congratulate my colleagues. This was a huge agenda. It's only nine, a little after nine. So, great job. We still have some work ahead of us because like the rest of you, I didn't have a chance to review everything in that Bella Field packet. It was this thick. In only a week. I don't think. I went through all the responses. I went through the basic plans. But I also agree with Bonnie. I think that the way they've submitted this now, the new format, is much easier to follow. It's not so piecemeal. I wasn't looking at the same, you know, digging everywhere. So at any rate, everyone have a great night. Make it a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion, Chris Oliver.
Seconded, Ann Dexter.
All in favor, please raise your hand, say aye.
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 Motion carries. We'll see everybody in two weeks. And in the meantime, thank you, Councilman Krepnik, for your spending three, a little over three hours as well to televise this and for you and Supervisor Worfers providing the resources to do it. Have a nice night.
Thank you.